All right, we're going to call to order the Tuesday, February 2nd meeting of the Cordera Town Council. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Present, but muted.
Councilmember Avasia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kunert.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here, thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now it's open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to comment on any items that are not on our agenda tonight. Members of the public will be given three minutes apiece, and we will start with Roy Wolford. If you'd like to make public comment during open time, please just raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. So we will start with Roy.
Before I start, before the time clock starts, Rebecca is going to put up on the screen her, well, she'll put her screen up and she'll show what I'm going to present. It's going to take longer than three minutes. My wife, Arlene.
I'm right here, hello.
It's going to take longer than three minutes, so I would like to ask if her time could be yielded to me. If not, she will take up the last part of the presentation.
Sure.
So I continue, or she picks up the presentation?
Go ahead.
Okay, good. Okay, so thanks to Rebecca for showing this screen. She's going to do a little navigation when I talk through this. So this is a screen from NOAA. It's showing the relative trends or changes in sea level. You can see that there's up arrows, there are down arrows, there's different colors, different lengths, and those are showing the different rates of change. And so we're going to take a look at the West Coast. We're going to look at the Aleutian Islands, and this is all relative changes. So here we see the Attic Islands. Sea level actually there is dropping 2.56 millimeters per year. And again, these are relative because the land has vertical motion, and then this is what's taken into account. So Rebecca, if you navigate over to Skagway, Skagway is dropping at, if you can believe this, almost 18 millimeters per year. Quite a drop. So Rebecca, kind of navigate down. You don't have to stop along the different borders between Canada, Washington, or the different states as we go down to San Francisco Bay. But if we look at Nia Bay in Washington, and you see blue arrows, those are pointing down. And so the sea level's going down there, 1.72 millimeters, and Hammond, Oregon, it's going down 1.22 millimeters, and Crescent City, 0.75. So now if we can go down to San Francisco Bay, if you could expand that out or zoom in, and click on San Francisco Bay, so right at the entrance of San Francisco Bay, we can see that the sea level projected rise is 1.9 millimeter, 1.9 millimeters per year. And that, I said projected, that's not correct. They're actually land-based instruments that are taking these measurements over decades of time. And so now let's look at Alameda. Alameda is going up 0.9 millimeters per year, and if you take a look, if you can read on the screen, it says the change is 0.3, or one-third of a foot in 100 years. That's in San Francisco Bay. So it's important to take a look at this information, and the reason I'm bringing it up is the cap needs to baseline and benchmark where we are today and what the sea level rise is actually doing today, or the trends. And this is a great tool for the town to use to get some benchmarks, but we also need equipment. So I'm going to have my wife give a summary on Arlene. She says no me. Okay, so we quickly went through the changes that are going on, and Rebecca, if you could bring up that chart. Okay, so this is a summarization of the information I provided, looking at the local NOAA data. So any of the data you see there in millimeters per year is local to that particular location. San Francisco Bay, 1.99 millimeters. Alameda, sea level is rising per year, 0.9 millimeters, and I'll point out that there are 25.4 millimeters in an inch. If you project those.
The first three minutes, so we're starting the second. Arlene's three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Skagway is dropping in, its trend in sea level is dropping almost six feet a century, if you project out the numbers. On the global average, NOAA satellites and NASA satellites are indicated globally around the world. It's an average trend, 0.3 millimeters per year and 3.3 millimeters per year, plus or minus about 4-point millimeters. And I might mention that the accuracy of this data is targeted out at 95% certainty. So if you project out the global satellite data, it shows that sea level rise will be one foot in a century. Now let's look, I've heard the state, and I think the cap has indicated that state of California for the past five years has carried numbers of one to two inches. If you take a look at the number of millimeters, you're talking about 2,500 millimeters for a one-year per-inch rise. And look, it's 99 millimeters for San Francisco Bay over that century. For five years, you're looking at 5,000 millimeters per century. Project that on a foot basis, over eight feet in a century, and almost 17 feet over a century if it's two inches per year. So that concludes the presentation. I thank you for the additional time. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much, Roy and Arlene. Next up, we're going to hear from JR.
Hello, everybody. JR Garibaldi here. I don't know if my video is working or my audio is working, but hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Great. I guess I'm here to read my, I sent the letter out last night. This is in regards to the climate adaptation plan that I know we'll be discussing in much more detail tomorrow, but I just wanted to summarize some points from my letter that I sent to each of you. I am member resident here in Mariner Cove, very much enjoy the community here, very much would like to see its continued vitality and continued growth. And I am concerned about various provisions of the cap that could well stunt that. And again, I know we'll be talking about that in more detail, but as you will see in my letter, which I know is a little bit lengthy, I am very concerned about the levy and title gate proposals that are currently found in the draft cap and the potential near and long-term impacts on our marshland, on our waterways, on our views, on our property rights, et cetera, et cetera. I understand, I guess, the function that they will serve, but I do not believe that they are where the town should be spending its time or money, certainly in the immediate future. I feel like there have to be better, more environmentally sensitive, property-friendly, neighborhood-friendly measures that we could take to help combat the rising sea levels, some of which are already referenced in that cap as it pertains to nature-based adaptation, some of which may need some more exploration by our consultants and constituents and everything else. But it feels like it is a very heavy hammer to swing at this time, and I'm lobbying my objection to those measures being included in any sort of draft cap. I also am concerned about the real estate disclosures that are suggested should be implemented on homes in Mariner Cove. I believe them to be a very, very bad idea, and I would say the same thing for restrictions on redevelopment and renovations in a neighborhood where frankly, you know, a lot of the homes around here need them. They're starting to get them as new families come in. We need to be encouraging that, and any sort of restrictions that are going to dry up the buyer pool or demotivate folks from improving our neighborhood, I think, need to be very closely analyzed and frankly deleted from the cap. I also would just submit finally that I think there needs to be a lot more community input before there's any sort of legislative action taken on this in the coming months.
Great. Thank you, JR. Thank you very much. And we do not have any other hands up at this time. Rebecca, do we have any emails for public open time?
I will check quickly, but I also wanted to add that Mr. Garibaldi's letter and all other emailed public comments we've received since the agenda was published on Friday have been updated, uploaded to the website and are available on their respective links as late correspondence received on the agenda. So they are available for the public to view, and they were emailed to the council for review.
Perfect. Thank you.
No additional emails for open time were received.
Okay, great. And we do not have any other hands up for open time, so we're going to close open time for public comments. There are no presentations, so this brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council or the public may pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion if they wish to. Would any members of the council like to pull any items from the consent calendar? If not, we'll turn it over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull any items from our consent calendar for further discussion, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom. We'll give folks a minute here. And I am not seeing any hands, so we will, oh, a hand just went up from Annette, so we will bring Annette on here. And Annette, you can go ahead and unmute yourself whenever you like and let us know which item you'd like to pull.
I'm unfamiliar with, did you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm unfamiliar with the terminology. When can we comment on this new town hall?
Oh, absolutely. That is coming up later in our agenda. That's going to be item 6A.
Never mind.
Thank you. We'll come back to you then. Okay, great. So we will bring this back to the council for discussion and a possible motion on the consent calendar. Yeah, Bob?
Move to approve items 4A through 4D.
Thank you. And Fred?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kunert?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That takes care of the consent calendar and brings us to item five, our public hearings. The first 5A is a public hearing to consider authorization for the Public Works Director to execute a facility financing contract with Tanco Street Lighting Incorporated in the amount of $260,519 for the design and construction of townwide LED retrofits of existing streetlight fixtures. RJ, I believe that's you.
Good evening, Mayor Beckman, members of the council. If I may, I'm going to start by sharing the screen. So this project dates back to, at least the last action was in 2019, to set a budget aside to retrofit our streetlight network to LED. This was originally planned over a kind of phase approach, a two-phase approach, if you will, and you know, through our analysis, we think there's an opportunity to accelerate that based on some of the cost savings and numbers we're receiving here today. I wanted to talk about first some of the merits of the project, and if you can see my screen, trying to zoom in, it's not quite going any further. You'll see that there's, you know, considerable energy savings and also costs estimated at about $75,000 annually. And to retrofit our entire network, we're looking at a baseline cost of 260,000, and we're putting aside some contingency just for things that may come up. I have Tanco lighting here that will discuss any technical issues. We have received some community feedback as of recently, and I think there was some little bit of misinformation about the type of lighting that we are proposing. In some of the past experimentations with other agencies, they use different Kelvin lighting that had that, you know, more bright white appearance. You know, we're proposing a 3,000 Kelvin light. We've had pilot projects within town, two outside of town hall, and also a series of them in front of Nugget Market on Paradise Drive for, you know, at least two or three years, and I haven't received any significant negative feedback on those, so you know, we have no reason to believe that they aren't performing as intended. Severely, part of the reason this is a public hearing is this is considered a a facility financing contract, which is slightly different format than your typical design and then competitively bid process. In some ways, for me, it feels like a design build. So you did a request for proposals. We reviewed a proposal from PG&E. We've reviewed one from Tanco Lighting. We ultimately internally felt that Tanco Lighting was the best choice, and that's who we're recommending today. They have extensive experience in this field, over 150 projects. They're really experts in their area, and, you know, with that, I'm happy to introduce Carolyn with Tanco Lighting and she's, were we able to bring her on? Perhaps, I'm not seeing her on the list, but.
Looks like she is an attendee right now and has her hand up.
We'll bring her over for at least question and answer, but
Perfect.
Really, they're going to try to, you know, make all the network look as close to now without sending, you know, bright white light into people's homes and really focus the lighting in the right of way. And she'll be able to speak to that.
RJ, who am I bringing over?
Sorry, it's Carolyn.
Oh, there she is.
Thank you. But on the facility contract side, this does require a public hearing, and hence why we've notified it as such, and this has been a formal notification that has been out for 14 days, so we've complied with that requirement, and we'll be discussing it today and taking any comments. Carolyn, would you like to add anything to that?
Um, yeah, hi, this is Caroline McDonald. Um, I don't think I need to add right now, or do you pretty much hit the nail on the head right there? Yeah, if anyone has any, any comments about the project and, you know, what we're planning to do with the town, you know, feel free to ask.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, RJ. We're going to take questions from the council, and then we will turn it over to the public for public comment. So are there any questions from council members for our staff or our consultants? David?
One, I think this is a question for RJ. If there is an existing light which neighbors feel is too bright in their homes, and we replicate that, is there a way that the focusing, and I've read, I've read their material, is the focusing can really direct that light entirely on the street and sidewalk? Or if there is an, deemed to be an inadequate shielding, can, what's the process that somebody has to add a shield?
Yeah, I could answer that, but I know Carolyn's going to answer it much better, so I am going to pass that one to her.
Yeah, no problem. That's a really good question. So when we are conducting our audit, which is our first phase, we have someone walking around the streets of the town. They're going to be noting about 20 to 30 different points of data per fixture, and they will note if a particular light is not angled properly, if it is going into someone's home. We build out photometrics to match or what should be in the, in the, in the right of way, rather than in people's homes. We don't want any backsplash when we convert to LED. And that is a big piece of our conversion, the audit, and then the subsequent design that comes after that. So if we do find any issues like that, they will be addressed in the design portion.
Thank you.
And just to add that, yeah, so our goal is obviously to get it right absolutely the first time. There might be a handful that we need to revisit, and we're happy to do that throughout the process.
Great. Thank you, David. Any other questions from council for staff or the consultant here? I've just got two quick questions. One, RJ, who, who did the pilot program? Who provided those lights?
You know, I, I don't, I don't know for sure. I can't say.
Okay, that was just, I was just curious. And then the other question is, do you happen to know what the color temperature of the lights specifically on Paradise is? I've noticed those. I think they look great. I was just curious how the new ones will compare.
Yeah, I believe they're 3,000 Kelvin as well.
Perfect. Beautiful. Great. Thank you. If there are no other questions from council members, we're going to go ahead and open this up to members of the public now. So if you'd like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And members of the public are going to be given three minutes apiece to make their comments. We're going to start with Peter Schwartz and then go to Robinson.
Great, and hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
So this is kind of a strong area for me, having been involved in lighting research for many years and kind of up to speed on all this. So a couple of questions. Are you considering dimming of the streetlights? So later in the evening, when virtually there's no one out on the streets, taxi, dimming the streetlights way down, or even turning them off for a number of reasons, not the least to which are energy savings, but more importantly, because of impact on flora and fauna. And as David pointed out, the light trespass that occurs frequently when the streetlights are located on a street above a house. And for example, in our house, streetlight shines directly in our bedroom. So I'm just wondering what consideration for dimming up streetlights or even having sensors on them for noticing movement and then coming up to light when a car or person comes by.
Great. Thank you very much, Peter. We are going to go to Robinson next, and again, we're just going to go through all the public comments right now, and then we'll come back to staff when we come to the discussion portion of this item in case there's any, you know, points raised by members of the public that staff or a consultant wants to touch on. So we're going to go to Robinson next, and then Michael.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Our home, we're in a sort of unique situation, Cordera. We live on a hill, and we already have a sodium vapor light in front of our house. I think it's already been touched on about the impact on intrusion in light in homes, but our existing light is already intrusive enough to require blinds and blackout curtains if anyone sleeps in the front bedroom. We're on the hill, as I mentioned, and from the back of our house, we already have existing lights illuminating our windows from San Quentin, the town center, the town center clock tower, virtually every streetlight east from Birch out to the bay. Our home actually can see the bridge, can see Richmond, Albany, and Berkeley, and we get the lights from most of the south side of Cordera. So it's an unusual circumstance. My concern, and I think RJ sort of touched on this, and also the consultant regarding the intensity LED lights to be installed, how they'll compare with similar lights that were installed in Santa Fe that generated over 100 complaints for the residents. But it's my understanding that Santa Fe is working with PG&E investigating and possibly installing a shield or screen, or even possibly a dimmer, as was mentioned previously in some areas. In the city of Davis, the worst example I found, they received so many complaints. They plan to spend some $350,000 to replace the LED lights after they got so many neighborhood complaints. I don't know what kind of lighting they had and how that compares to what's being proposed in Cordera. I do understand, I read the staff report, the merits of the proposal is outlined, and would like to know how our proposed 3,000 CCT lights will compare, as I mentioned, with those other communities that received significant complaints. And also, I think Vice Mayor Dave Kunert touched on this. The question I have is about those that have existing lights and those that are going to have these new LED lights now. What will be the process to mitigate the intrusion of light to adjoining homes, either through dimmer switches, as was mentioned, or by a shield? I think that was a remedy that was actually mentioned in the staff reports. Like to know how that is going to work as well. So those are my comments. Appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to go to Michael next, followed by Janet.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. Okay, I've got two just quick questions. One, has any consideration been given to supporting the lighting system with, say, solar, a solar backup, battery storage, either on the fixtures themselves or a central system that could offer power for the lighting? And then my second question is, has any consideration been given to potentially financing the cost for this LED conversion through the savings? In other words, put together maybe a 10-year loan and be able to pay the cost through the savings we realize from this efficient lighting?
Great questions. Thank you, Michael. We're going to go to Janet next, followed by Pat.
Hello, hi. Thank you very much for the opportunity. This is the first time I've been on a Zoom town meeting. I really love it, and I love that little clicking clock. That's really awesome. Keeps me on, on target. I just had a couple of questions about, well, actually, one real question about what I think is, and I haven't done enough reading, but I think is a procurement that occurred that ended up being Tanco being sort of awarded for this job, and I'm just curious what the evaluation factors were that were used in this procurement or the solicitation, and the only other comment I had was, I do have a light that, a street light that hits right into my home, into my windows, and so I was, I was going to just suggest that maybe the city put up a little sample before and after lighting example somewhere for the public to drive by, maybe in the evening and see maybe at at town center building or something. As they drive by, they can see, okay, this is what it looked like before, this is what it'll look like after, and it might alleviate some of the concerns about this bright white light, which of course would be a big bummer for me because I already have the bright light coming in and having it any brighter would be awful. So just a suggestion to kind of give folks a kind of an idea of how it will actually look. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Janet. We're going to go to Pat next.
Hi there. I want to say I really support this project. We just went through some crazy work, doing some electrical lighting, landscaping at our house, and then we learned all about the great value of LEDs for energy savings. It makes the fixtures last longer. Everything works better, so thank you for this initiative. I agree that we need to be really careful about shielding from the light on, in our landscape, we were careful to put, we were just lighting the walkway so that you're not blinded by light at eye level, and I know you can't do that with streetlights, but putting something on top of them that would shield uphill people who are inadvertently just washed in light from, from streetlights. And when we first moved into our house, we had, we have a a light right out in front of our house that was so bright, PG&E actually came out with a can of black paint and climbed up on a ladder and painted out the part of the light that was facing into our house. So I figure if I can get PG&E to do that, I'll be able to get RJ to come over and figure out how to shield the light. But, and also the other thing is, I think a lot of the complaints, I did, I read about some of those too. They're from it being the wrong shade of white, too white. So I think if you can go towards the warm colors, I think people will have a much better reception to them. My comments. Thanks very much. Thanks for your work on.
Thank you so much, Pat. We're going to go to Glenda next, followed by Michelle.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Hello. Yes.
Sorry, had a little glitch there. I have LED lights in my backyard, and I have been distressed by them because they light up the yard as if it's day, and I hope that a consideration that you make when you're installing these lights, which I, I know makes sense from the standpoint of energy efficiency, is the hue of the light. I hope that they're as warm as possible, that they are as subdued as possible, because the concept of the dark night sky is a very valuable one. And, you know, I actually think it's a danger to walk underneath a bright light and then step into relative darkness. You, you don't have any night vision. And I find these lights to be very annoying and unpleasant, and I'm just hoping that there's a way that you can shield them and direct them and warm them up and dim them down and, and keep the night sensual experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Glenda. We're going to go to Michelle next.
Hi, I live across from the fire station on Tamalfoe Drive, and I would feel
And I would feel fortunate that I was, my block was part of the ambient street lighting that was installed some years ago. However, on my block, there was one light that was set across the street in front of the fire station and it's actually had the opposite effect on my home. It's very difficult to find my driveway at night due to lack of street lighting. And while I would never want to go back to the old style street light, which is still at the intersection of just, just a few blocks down from my house. And it does shine in my living room. I can totally relate to the person who was commenting on that because I used to have to have the same problem. But I would appreciate if you could address this in the new lighting plan. Take a look at this one light that's right in front of the fire station and I don't know why it wasn't on the same side of the street as the rest of the lighting. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Michelle. We do not have any other hands up right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item from folks who have not gotten a chance to speak yet at this meeting?
Yes, we did receive, a few were sent to town staff, so I'm.
Great, and while you do that, we just got a hand up from Patty, so I'll bring Patty Stolier on here. Hello Patty.
Hi, I just wanted to say that if anyone is really irritated with their streetlight, we would really, really welcome it on Casa Buena. Thank you.
Thank you, noted. All right, and we've just got a, another hand up from, from Eileen, I believe.
You're, it's actually Dan Phipps. But I just want a quick question. I think everybody's concerns are really wonderful. The shielding business, is it, is it, will there be a tool for citizens of Cora Madera to report to some person about a light that is in front of their house or a known one? So that it's, it isn't left up to the consultants to sort of search out all the potential problems? It would be great to have that tool. Thank you very much for going down this route. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Dan. Oh boy, we got a lot of hands coming up now. We're going to go to Phyllis next and then Suzie.
Excuse me, thank you Eli, appreciate this. And I too am in the segment that is saying, I already have a light shining in our bedroom from a streetlight across the street from us. Used to be able to be blocked pretty much by a tree in our front yard, but since we've had to do a lot of cutting back, that's no longer the case. So is the light going to be in the yellow spectrum like the existing streetlights or is, you said it's not going to be a harsh, harsh white light, but it's still going to be in the white light spectrum? RJ's going no.
Good, yeah, Phyllis, we can, we'll, we'll come back to all of the questions and comments raised and public comment as soon as we wrap up.
I'm, I'm concerned about a shield also.
Okay, got it. So shielding and, and like color temperature.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll come to Suzie next.
Hi, thank you. I'm very, I didn't know about the possibility of dimming these lights and I just wanted to say that that sounds very interesting to me. I am concerned with over lighting our town and the night sky is just something that we cannot lose and extra bright, too much light. And again, that white light, I would concur with many of the things that were said already. So thank you very much. I know you're going to do your best.
Great, thank you, Suzie. All right, and Rebecca, where do we stand on those emails?
Okay, we have the two of them right here and they are brief, so I won't start the timer. The first one is from Tim Hano, who says, to whom it may concern, I am totally against the replacement of our streetlights with high intensity LED lights. The city has not explained what the lumen rating of these new lights will be. Several of the residents of Cora Madera have streetlights in their front yard, so instead of living on a block with a warm glow that has been efficient for 40 years, we will now be living under the lights of a Costco. Thank you, Tim Hano. And the next one is from Gail Lit, who says, dear town council members, I strongly object to the proposed replacement of current streetlights with LED retrofits. Wherever these lights have been installed, there have been widespread complaints about their negative effects on human health, light pollution, privacy, wildlife, et cetera, not to mention their terrible aesthetics. While I support your effort to save money, promote safety and become more energy efficient, I hope you will balance that with the equally, if not more important, quality of life considerations and our community's wish to retain its small town gracious ambiance. Bright 4,000 K LED lights may be appropriate for shopping malls and highways, but they do not belong on our neighborhood streets. Sincerely, Gail Lit, Cora Madera resident. Jared, RJ, did I, I catch everything that you sent to me?
Great, okay, thank you very much, Rebecca. We do not have any other hands up at this time, so I'm going to close public comment and bring this item back to the council for discussion. I think a lot of great points raised by residents and a lot of the same points raised by residents. So I think RJ and Carolyn, I think we've got some clear lines of inquiry here. So if you wouldn't mind just telling us a little bit about color temperature, shielding, how LEDs are with regards to kind of like perceived overall brightness or light spillage with regards, you know, as compared to the high pressured sodium orange lights that we have now, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, I'll jump in first and I'll let Carolyn elaborate. I'm sure she's got plenty of depth of knowledge here. Can everyone see my screen with the diagram here? So this is what they call the correlated color temperature chart. So as you can see, 3,000 is kind of in this kind of gold-orange category here. Speaking specifically to the article I read about the Davis project, for one, that was back in 2014, according to the article I read, they looked at a pilot project that looked at 5,700 Kelvin, so way up here, and also 4,000 Kelvin down here. They ended up going with 4,000 and that still was considered too bright and later shifted to a 2,700 Kelvin at a cost of, you know, $300,000. So we're here in this category from the start and Carolyn can talk about the, you know, response there as, as one wants to hand it over to her. But this is the, the chart that they use to kind of explain how to compare, you know, the various types of lighting to LED. Also want to touch on, so we'll have to look into dimming and I'll also ask Carolyn for her thoughts on that one. You know, if that was considered, we would have to also look at it from a, a safety and kind of liability standpoint because that could change behavior of people driving and whatnot. Solar, we are, I think on new installations, that that's definitely something that we want to consider. Up till now, it hasn't been included in this effort. We can have that conversation with consultancy, what that might cost or entail. But, you know, I think, you know, the, the current system should be up and running. So I don't know how often they would go out to have that kind of battery backup need or replacement need. We did consider financing and that did add several layers of paperwork and whatnot to the process. And given we had the funds, we decided to recommend it as kind of paid upfront, just to streamline the overall effort. As mentioned, there was a request to understand where some of these lights are. There's, there's some in front of Nugget, also on the southeast corner of Willow. And so if you're at that corner, there are some nearby, you can see, there, there might be a subtle difference, but very, very minimal. The RFP criteria was really looking at a turnkey project, a detailed process. We looked at the overall costs, actually Tanco came in less expensive than PG&E's proposal. And they were very responsive and had a lot of experience, so, and extensive references, all very, very high marks. We would love any feedback about existing lighting that is causing anyone heartburn or issues, knowings half the battle. So happy to take those upfront, incorporate them into the design and audit. One easy way to send those to us is email them to PWcounter@TCMmail.org. And we'll be happy to highlight those in our process and let us know what it is specifically that you aren't happy with. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Carolyn to fill in any other blanks.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just wanted to mention that our CEO is also on the line. He is the one raising his hand, that would be Jason. And he has a few fill in the blanks as well. And yeah, RJ, not sure if that would be, looks like he's coming on. There's Jason. Jason, did you want to go ahead and start? And we had a lot of questions on the color temperature and shielding for the most part. I do want to just address dimming really quick. That could be something with controls and RJ, you and I can talk about that later, but that's definitely something that we can consider. Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, okay, great. So I was taking notes as the good public comments were coming through. So I'll, I'll try to actually go in order because I was just making notes as people were, were talking. In reference to dimming, there's really no savings right now with the fixtures and even dimming them down. So you'd be paying the same rate, even if you were to dim the fixtures, it would really just add more cost. There are some considerations of potential safety in the night if, you know, the lights are essentially too dark and, you know, potential hazards that could arise from that. So dimming can be really controversial and right now it's, the, the design here is just to keep the lights on all night and that will, the rate will support that. But obviously, we do agree, bringing the light levels down to something that's more appropriate. There had been mentioned about a light on a hill. We have at times designed where the light is like this and then the hills like this, we can actually turn the fixture to match the street that cuts down on the glare and actually gets the light to the surface, the way it goes. That doesn't create any problems. So that's something we'll consider because we have, you know, we did lighting in the Berkeley Hills and that, that is a consideration that came up and a lesson learned from that project. Several things we're covering, really the, the color temperature, we're going to be in a very warm color temperature here. It'll be very much incandescent. And the other aspect around the fixtures currently in Cora Madera, the lights have a drop lens, a lot of them, the Cobra heads. So that's really spreading out light in all directions and certainly throwing light up into the, into the, the night sky. These lights will be full cutoff. All the light will just be going straight down. So the bleed off of the right away is going to be drastically minimized. Usually the complaint that we get is, hey, you're not lighting up my front yard anymore or I can't see my front door to put the key in. So this is about lighting the right away, which is the public's responsibility and not getting it into people's, you know, front porches, windows, things like that. And these will be things that we're looking for as we're doing our designs where the pattern is being thrown around and making sure it's, it's staying down and in the public right away. I think in general that covered a lot of what people had in reference to the comments. So some of the unsuccessful comments that are projects that were mentioned, there was very little design or really just insufficient design, certainly in Davis. PG&E really doesn't do hardly any design we've seen. They just usually put up the lights and kind of cross their fingers. So we will be going neighborhood by neighborhood and really making sure what's appropriate based on what you have. So that's probably all I have to add for now.
Thanks, Jason.
Great, well, thank you guys very much. Do we have any comments from council members or additional questions for RJ or consultants? Let's go to Charles.
Thanks, Mayor. So one is, I think, I think I'd like to change the narrative. You know, it's not that our residents are complaining or going to challenge it. I hear from the company and what I would hope to see is a collaborative improvement process, right? Like it's not, we're just, we're not just swapping them out, but by doing it collectively throughout and the process that I've seen in the write-up in more detail is that they will work with people. I, you know, my own experience is at SFO, we did this for the whole airfield on high mass lighting, you know, for $2 billion airplanes. I did the photometric studies with, you know, lighting designers. The new LEDs, they're very focusable and you can tune them to specific areas and hit and get the foot candles on the ground that you want. It's a much different thing than what all these streetlights we have currently in town are. It's just a totally new game. You know, it's $1.7 million that we're going to save overall in energy costs, but, and then also maintenance, you know, these things go forever environmentally. I think that they're a lot better, you know, light bulb recycling and stuff is a really difficult thing, especially with the sodiums. The orange light is not good. You know, there are state regulations about lighting and night compliance lights, so they just by code can't install anything that's going to flood the, the sky with, it's only getting better at the state level and everything down below. So I hear a lot of those complaints. You know, the other thing is I also have one of those big orange, you know, streetlights out in front, it comes into my window and I put down the shades. And so I personally saw and read all these over the last week and I thought a lot about it on a personal level. You know, that it's, it's, the streetlight isn't just about my house, it's about the neighborhood. It's about the health and safety of everybody that shares the streets and walks down my street, children going to Safeway at night. And, you know, the other thing is, is we've been struggling with car break-ins and a lot of other things. And, you know, the lights really help keep that type of petty crime down and other things that I think are as beneficial if not. And we all have shading systems and can deal with it, but I think it'll only improve. I've also done interior lighting. The 3,000 is actually low, you know, 35 is what, what the standard usually is now for, for what we understand as light. So it will be a nice warm glow from what I understand. So I just wanted to share those understandings because I, and then the other one is, is, you know, on the financing standpoint, from what I read is the initial thoughts where this was going to be a half a million dollar project, right? And basically it's come in at less than that, you know, the three fifths of that. And we get to do the entire town and the money's already there. So it's actually that we're saving, we're going to put money back into the kitty. So I think that everybody needs, you know, the residents really need to understand that is the, because the technology has evolved and the, and, and this, as we do more of it, the cheaper it gets. So I can make the findings on this and, and I hear everyone's concerns and I really, I really saw the process they were talking about. I've seen it and I hope that they reach, the residents feel they have the ability to, to collaboratively improve their lighting conditions as we upgrade, so.
Great points, thank you, Charles. Who else would like to comment on this? David?
Very quickly, Jason, you mentioned a sort of flattening off the bottom. Is that what your, the write-up meant has focus or focal lens of these lights? If you could just be a little bit more clear as to exactly what change from before to after is and give people additional confidence, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the lights, the, the terminology is full cutoff. And that's really the terminology. Yeah, just like what Charles, yeah, it puts everything straight down. In fact, there's even sometimes when people are approaching the streetlights, the glare is drastically cut down. We've even had some people say, oh, the light's not working, but the light is on the street. I just can't see it because it's literally not coming towards, you know, their car as they're walking towards it. So it is, it is very much different in terms of how it operates. And it's really more, almost like a, you can maybe draw an alignment to like your, your headlight. It's very much a focused beam. It's not going up into the sky, it's really getting out and in front. This is somewhat of the same idea that it's creating a box of light within the street, going sidewalk to sidewalk and really not leading out from the right away. And the, the term coming back to it is full cutoff. Nothing is going up into the night sky and also having the right amount of intensity on the street. So you're also not reflecting light off the concrete or off the blacktop back into the night skies route. So it's really dialing it in, so you're just getting enough, but you're not reflecting it back out either.
David, when we installed them at SFO, they used to have scalloped ones and it's literally like the bottom of the light is flat. And so it just broadcast down and they basically get the, if they need angled flow, at least with ours, they, they have these little kind of frizzle, kind of concave lenses that they could tune, you know? And then the fixture itself has the ability to adjust by a couple of degrees to also then put it where it needs to be specifically within that, within that throw. And, and then that throw, they can map down onto the space. And that's what the photometric studies that they are, that they, they speak about is, is actual foot candles. They can figure it out from the height of the pole and specifically where it would go and what it needs to do to achieve the public goals, so.
Very helpful, David. Great, thanks. Bobby, saw your hand?
I was just going to thank Charles for real world experience with this. So thank you. I mean, it was great.
I was just going to thank Charles for real world experience with this. So thank you. I mean, it was great perspective. And staff gave a great report. It sounds like this is going to be a net improvement. You know, there's going to be some hiccups as we get this through, but it sounds like it's a real positive on a lot of different levels. So I can get behind this too. Thanks.
Absolutely. I mean, yeah, Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I can support the project also. The question I have is RJ, if, say it gets installed a month later, resident complains about it. Is that your group that would go out there to make appropriate adjustments? Or how long does Jason's group have to make those adjustments?
Yeah. So the bulk of the effort is, is going to be leading up to the construction of the audit, the design phase. I forgot the exact terms, but I know the install is really only two weeks and we're, we're looking at sometime late summer, early fall. So we will send out some next door posts and other outreach materials saying, hey, here it's coming. And, you know, provide some information of where to contact, should there be a need to make an adjustment.
Okay.
And then we'll work with, you know, ideally work with the experts, Tanco, and get it all resolved before we, you know, close out the project.
Right. The only keep in mind is, is as we go forward daylight savings time, again, it is what it is. But if you're installing those during a period of time where it's lighter later versus all of a sudden it's five o'clock at night. We may have some differences there, but again, it is what it is.
Great. Thank you, Fred. The only thing I'll say is honestly, I think members of the public raise great points. And, and if these are the things that we're worried about, which is, you know, light spillage, safety and aesthetics. I'm even more supportive of this project then, because I think what we've heard from staff is that this, these LEDs are going to be an improvement over the existing orange lights on all of those fronts. And, and to anybody who has any questions, I would say only go check out the, the pilot program lights that are on Paradise Drive right now. Like RJ said, right out in front of Nugget, I drive by them every night. They are a fantastic, they're just the right color. You know, they're warm, they're not overly bright. They don't cast a glare the way that the, the horrible orange ones do. I think this is fantastic and I would take a motion if anybody would like to make one.
I'd like to move approval.
Great. Thank you, David. Thank you, Charles.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much, Rebecca. Item 5B, this is the first reading and possible introduction of ordinance number 1004, authorizing the town manager to settle claims and lawsuits of up to $50,000 as permitted by state law.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank Rebecca Vaughn for drafting the staff report and for the work of our town attorney for putting this ordinance together. Again, in January of 2019, Assembly Bill 2249 took effect, which increased the dollar threshold and with respect to projects. And they can maybe perform without formal bidding procedures in accordance with California Public Contract Code 22032. So as we started to basically make this update to our ordinance, we identified a few, three additional areas that we wanted to update. The last time this ordinance was touched was in 2003 and then over a decade, I believe before that. And so we wanted to update, it's on page two of your staff report. What we're asking for consideration is to allow the town manager to settle claims and litigation. The establishment of thresholds for non-public projects such as purchase, purchases of materials, supplies, equipment and services. And the authority for purchasing agent, which is your town manager or my destiny, to amend contracts or purchasing orders, provided the amendments do not exceed approval authority. And so again, on page on two, you can see what we're asking. We're asking that you allow and authorize the town manager to settle claims on litigation. Government Code Section 935.4 allows the town council to authorize an employee to compromise and settle claims and litigation in the amount up to $50,000. The proposed ordinance allows the town manager to collect, settle and compromise, release or dismiss any claim of the town provided its disposition and not otherwise directed by the town council or by statute ordinance resolution, insurance policy or agreement and subject to certain conditions. As you can tell, I don't write like that. That's definitely Amy. The second one, again, we're, we're up, we're upping some of the thresholds per, really the standards in the industry. And we're, we're moving in the second, in the second spot here, we're, we're upping to $60,000 to be, to be led by a purchase order up to 200,000. So that would be the second one for contracts. And then also we're upping, let's see, where am I getting lost here? And then again, we're also asking for the updates in the bid policy to require consideration of at least three bids on all purchases and materials and supplies and equipment. In general services over $10,000 and less than 75,000. So anything between 10 and 75,000. The previous threshold was 5,000. So we're upping it again, $5,000. It's been some time since we've updated this. And really, you know, the, the cost of supplies and materials has gone up. And again, this is in accordance with either standard law practices or with other cities and towns within the Bay Area. We also have an attachment. Let's see, we have attachment one, we have the introduced proposed ordinance, but we also have a redlined attachment. So you can see the changes that are being recommended and we are happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Todd. Do we have any questions from the council for Todd? If not, we'll go ahead and open this item up for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor Beckman, we got one emailed public comment and the resident actually combined her comments. There's a similar item on the sanitary district's agenda tonight. So I'll just read it's two paragraphs. I'll read the full comment now and just refer back to it when we get to the sanitary district agenda.
Perfect.
Okay, says, dear public comment, thank you for circulating the agenda and related support. You are all quite busy. There clearly are wonderful initiatives being organized for. I also believe the current team in place at the town is truly serving the public exceptionally well. My comment that I may not be understanding with public works relates to not having to obtain a competitive bid or request for proposal RFP if $200,000 or lower. Assuming I read that right, somewhere in the package of information, the spirit of this provision makes sense. So the town can work efficiently given its overall budget. Should there be some type of limitation provision, AKA a cap to that language? So that a bid could not be broken into two amounts, $200,000 or less each to work around the provision requirements perhaps. Have a limit that any vendor can utilize such provision once per 12 month period. This comment also applies to the town manager being able to enter into agreements, $50,000 or less. Again, limiting the ability to split the amounts and/or the number allowed per 12 month cycle. So if no one individual has the ability to avoid a review process, again, very much support leadership needs the flexibility to work to get things done. It's more the temptations of pressure to do something, processes and controls with limitations. So the individual has a place to turn to double check themselves. Best regards, Mary Kaiser.
Great. Thank you very much. And we do not have any hands up. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion on this item. And I would like to invite Todd or Amy to start if they want to just maybe touch on the points raised in that I thought very thoughtful comment.
It's a great comment. I think I understand what she's asking. I'm going to ask RJ or Amy to touch on that because this is really what you do every day. I will just remind one point that I definitely want to emphasize, and I think the council understands this, but for the community. Again, what we're asking to as well on this, within these thresholds, the, this is currently, currently items that are within the currently approved budget. So this isn't something where we're just going to say, we're going to prove something $50,000 that hasn't been approved by the council previously. So these aren't budget amendments. It's already approved within a line item within the budget. And so I just really wanted to emphasize that. And RJ or Amy, can you touch on the, the question asked?
Right. And, and what also you can't tell from this ordinance is the state law, the state has a public contracts code and public works, the whole process is, is itemized in there and it, and it prohibits, you know, bid splitting and some of these, these things that the commenter was talking about. So we have those, those safeguards in state law. But we're simply, and then state law allows the town to decide the threshold that they want and the thresholds that we're adding are consistent with state law. We're not doing anything that exceeds what the state allows the community to do. And in terms of the settlement of claims and litigation, state law expressly says that a town council can delegate up to $50,000 settlements. And, you know, I'm sorry to say, but in today's world, you know, 50,000 and less are considered basically nuisance settlements. And so the idea being that's kind of, that's the threshold, the state is determined that no, we want our, our council members to address bigger settlements and bigger claims, but under that amount, you know, the, the council is, is busy doing a lot of important things and they shouldn't need to do that. It, it is a cap on, so that has to be a separate claim, a separate, you know, that the claims you have before you can sue a government entity, you have to file a claim. And those claims get evaluated by staff to determine if there's merit or not. And then they'll consult with the town attorney and, and other attorneys from our firm to decide whether to pay it. So there are safeguards in there. And you can't really split that because you have one, one claim. But the fact that we do have to, you know, review each of these before making the determination to settle is a safeguard to ensure that people aren't playing the system and that, you know, they, they can't file multiple claims for the same incident. So I believe San Anselmo or Larkspur has, has recently done, done the same thing in terms of their claims. So I think there's, there, you know, I think, I think the commenter is right to, we have to have our safeguards in place. But I think in this situation, we have, we have those safeguards in place. And the idea is, you know, council should be setting policy and reviewing the big picture items. But the smaller things, you know, can really be dealt with at a staff level. Happy to answer any other questions. RJ, I think has something.
Just one item, Adam, to add, Amy addressed it very well. There's also, so we, we're also subject to random audits. We have fair contracting groups out there that also will perform their own audits. So, you know, not only is it explicit, there is an enforcement mechanism. So just wanted to add that.
Great. Thank you, guys. Charles?
Yeah. So just to start off, I, I worked under this, basically the same guidelines. There's the, the design build projects I've worked in a couple of different places had those thresholds that you've set previously. And the project managers, it was a much more efficient tool for them to execute the overall contracts. They're, they're not really built to, to be exploited. They're still under the contract law of the state and it's, it's very stable. The other thing I have to say about our local government is I know Todd and RJ, if there was some kind of question to it, instead of jeopardizing their own, you know, kind of reputations and the town's reputation, would just bring it to the council anyway. But really it's an expedience tool so that they don't have to ask for giant buckets of money. In some ways it allows them to execute the project more efficiently without hitting us up all the time. And I think it's, you know, because the states basically made it possible. You know, it's kind of the industry standard. So I think we should just approve it. So I can make the findings for it, no problem. And assure, be assured that, you know, it's not going to be corrupted. So.
Great. Thank you, Charles. Any other comments? And if not, we'll take a motion. Yeah, Bob?
I move that we waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1004.
Great. Thank you, David.
Second.
Beautiful. Thank you very much, Rebecca. Whenever you're ready.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That concludes item 5B, which was our last public hearing and brings us to item six, our business items. Tonight's only business item is discussion and possible action to address town hall facility and operations. We're considering two options. One is to renovate the existing town hall here on Tamil Pious Drive. And option two is to declare an intent to basically relocate town operations and purchase functional office space elsewhere. And with that, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll try to give a better staff report this time. I had a six-year-old and a five-year-old trying to throw me off my game. So to start this off, I wanted on my background to set it up, the stage of this is what our council chambers would look like with the amount of people on this call right now. And so in the spirit of what it used to be like before COVID, I thought I would share that. I want to introduce my team for this item. This has been, you know, this goes back to 2018 to present of how long we've been working on this with our working group and the community and the planning commission. But Jared Bario, he's our senior engineer, Phil Boyle, Phil Boyle is our senior planner. Adam Wolf is our planning and building director, RJ Suko, our public works director, and Ron Cappy from Cappy Architects are on this call. So just a little bit of background for any members of the public that hadn't had an opportunity to look at the whole packet. It's 256 pages, but last meeting, we, we came back to the council at the last meeting. It's attachment two of your staff report. And really what's new, what's been going on in the last few months? Well, the planning commission has reviewed this project and it's come to a culmination and they have approved both resolutions before you. So the town hall remodel and addition project is ready to go before council. At the same time, staff has been really coordinating our operations of when we can possibly reopen town hall. And as well as dealing with the current situation of town hall. Our roof now needs to be replaced. We had a water leak, two water leaks in the last month with the rains. It appears that we have mold now in our, our ceiling and walls and we have asbestos in our tiles. We have a lot of issues that we've shared over the last couple of years of why we've even been talking about this project. One of the things that's new right now, and we brought it to council at the last meeting was what are we going to do in the interim? We have to do something. And so we're going to either have to lease space, you know, get some portables or modules and, and move somewhere in the area, move our operations. We most likely will not open town hall operations in the current town hall building as we previous, previously knew it prior to COVID. And so that was a discussion we had. The other discussion we had is something that we've always promised the community and the council was once this project was completed, we were going to go ahead and look at all options available to us. You know, this is a big, a big dollar project and it's important. And so we brought that forward as well. And one of the things we looked at was leasing. It was an option. It was option three. And that was, we looked at all available office space from 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. Bless you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And we, we looked at all available office space, eight to 10,000 square feet in Corder Madera. And then we took the averages of what leased space is going for right now. And with what we need in that square foot range was about 400 to $550,000 a year was our cost plus utilities and other additional expenses. And so that was the first option. It was one that the council wasn't interested in considering for a variety of reasons. But one was, we felt like I think it was a misuse of taxpayer dollars. And so option two was what other office spaces available? And we had a number of office space buildings available to us. Since then, staff has really narrowed it down to two, but they were a primary point to discussion at the last meeting as well. It was 101 Lucky, which is on the highway, off of the highway there and north west Corder Madera. And we had a very good, healthy discussion about that. The cost of that building, if we were to purchase it, is somewhere similar to what the town hall addition project would be. And then we spent a lot of time also, very intriguing kind of opportunity was Hunt Plaza. Hunt Plaza is 22,000 square feet and we were evaluating potentially leasing out half of that space and then moving our town operations into the other half. And so that was an intriguing and it still is an intriguing property. And so we had a lot of discussion about that. After community feedback, the council came back and directed staff to come back to you and, and further vet option one and two. And so that's what we're doing today. And so I want to set the stage for the staff report for you and the conversation. And so that's what we're doing today. And so I want to set the stage for the staff report for you and the conversation. And so I'm going to have Phil Boyle basically cover the planning commission process. And and all the work that we did to get to the planning commission. It's one that honestly I'm proud of. Over the last four years, this council and your staff and the community of lessons learned of the past, really focused on process. And the process, which you'll hear from staff coming up here next. Brought us to this project where it is today. And so we're proud of that. And you know, there were some twists and turns, you know, about twelve months into the process. You know, the neighbors came up and said, hey, we didn't know about this. We're concerned. We want to be engaged. And you could see. Within the the process as we go and it's on the website as well to link to the to the from the staff report. You can see where we stopped and we had to pivot and we had to reengage and really have some thoughtful communication. And and make some thoughtful changes. And I really credit the team and I credit Ron Cappy for making those changes. And then that we finally made it to the planning commission. And we'll talk about that as well. The second piece, as as you always have in in any report, we're setting you up to make a decision. And so our recommendation is that. You approve the two resolutions before you, the present, the resolutions that were approved by the the planning commission. At the same time, option two is still a consideration and if council after this discussion of staff with staff amongst yourselves and with the community. If you still believe that we should vet the option two of. Either one of these two properties, we've narrowed it down to those two, Hunt Plaza and one oh one Lucky. Then what we can do is we can engage in closed session meetings and and have a real estate discussion of negotiations. As that's a tactical strategic conversation. But I think council all along said, hey, let's have a public, let's have a number of public conversations before we ever think about having closed sessions. And if that's the way we want to go, then we'll we'll have our closed sessions and we'll negotiate. I see this as you being able to do both at the same time. The recommendation of staff, which you'll hear from us. Is to approve the two resolutions before you, but your alternative analysis isn't part of the discussion of this report. We have a matrix that has been asked, this is the data that we think council asked us to come back to you with. If there's any new additional lines that you want us to add to this matrix to consider tonight, we can certainly have the discussion. But when you evaluate it, it it leads staff to to recommend option one to you. But again, I think we can do both parallel if council wishes, because it's always the devil's in the details. And if one of these properties in your mind can be had for a certain dollar amount, and if that changes your decision making, we can do it. We can, we're set up to have that conversation and move forward. So. With that, if you don't have any questions, I want to turn it over to Phil and really focus on option one, the town hall addition. And remodel project and really the process that got us here with these two resolutions before you. And then we're going to turn it over to RJ after that to talk, or I'm sorry, we're going to turn it over to Adam Wolf. I want, because I really want him to really. Discuss like the process to make sure that you are comfortable with the process to this point. And then turn it over to RJ to talk about the matrix on our alternative analysis for you to consider. And then we'll come back with any questions. Okay, Phil?
Thank you, Todd. I just wanted to, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay.
Thanks, Phil.
And there to see that. Yeah, then I was going to just introduce my boss, Adam. We we moved the order around a little bit, Todd. Think Adam is going to go first and then and then to me and then I think RJ, if that's all right with everybody.
Yeah, exactly. And I, thanks, Todd, for setting that up. You stole a lot of, a lot of my thunder here, but. Because you know, I love, I love the process as well and talking about that, but. Good evening, mayor and and council members. As as Todd mentioned, what we're going to do, I'm going to, Phil and I are really going to talk about sort of the the project planning. And the process that got us to this point. And then we'll talk about the options and RJ will take it over from there. So. I I do, I do just want to reiterate and and echo really what Todd said about the last two and a half years. It's been quite a remarkable process. It's something that I I feel. Really good about in terms of how we got to the point where we are today, where. You can look outside my office and I can see the story polls going up and and you can actually really see how it it this potential project fits in with. The neighborhood and incorporates a lot of the comments we heard. And really, that's a tribute to. The last two and a half years. The project being shaped by many members of the Corder Madera community. Who have spent their time and energy and participated and contributed at public meetings and workshops. It's also, Phil, you can go to the next slide. Really, this was. You know, back in two thousand, early two thousand nineteen. This project really was shaped by those who served on the town hall working group. They were tasked with identifying and weighing opportunities and constraints for a potential town hall project and an appropriate project location. As Todd mentioned, it was shaped by our neighbors who will be most directly affected by new development, both on Tamil Pious and on Willow. By the town's planning commissioners who thoroughly vetted the project design, sustainability measures and parking over the course of three public meetings. Starting in the spring of two thousand and twenty and then culminating in a meeting in October, end of October this last year. And also through careful analysis and study really by. A lot of town staff and and our project consultants who Todd introduced, but really led by Public Works Department Director RJ Sukho. And and jumpstarted by Peter Brown is his predecessor, Senior Engineer Jared Berio and. Senior Planner Phil Boyle, you'll be hearing from him right after me. Of course, Ron Cappy, our consulting project architect. Circle Point in Bayran, along with Peter Schwartz, who we pulled in to help provide environmental and energy analysis. Respectively on those two different aspects of the project, other consultants, engineers and traffic. Engineers as well. For parking analysis and and also it's worth mentioning, just of course, Todd. Town, town manager Todd Cusamano and the town council as well, who really provided direction at key junctures of the project development process. So. What's exciting is that we believe these efforts really have created a project that meets the town's needs for a long term solution to. The longstanding and serious deficiencies at the town hall, existing town hall facility, which we've talked about. At length during community meetings in the past and just last town council meeting as well as we we touch on that. Even earlier in this presentation. So. It it, but it also will provide this long term solution to meet our town's residents and our business community. By providing a more functional and operationally efficient facility that respects its neighborhood context and creates inviting public spaces. Where our community can congregate and take part really in the important work of shaping Corder Madera's future. So. I know I and the rest of the project team were were truly excited to be able to show. The town council and members of the public, this town hall remodel and addition project. And answer questions that you you may have. And the first few slides that 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 Phil is showing is just to show. The various public meetings that we've had, as Todd mentioned, at the last planning commission meeting. The planning commission did recommend to the council approval of not only. The SEQA document, the initial study mitigated negative declaration. Which is a required requirement for the council to approve and evaluate the environmental impacts prior to approving the town hall additional. Remodel project. So the second resolution, if you recall, what we've done is we've. Have a resolution that essentially approves the project as a legislative matter. Based on information provided in a town project report. This is following this, the the new process for reviewing. Town, town projects on on town property, town owned property. So those are the two resolutions we have for you to consider this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Phil, who's going to do a relatively brief recap of the of the. Project proposal itself. Oh, and and I should, I should mention as well since. And Phil, why don't you pick up on this, but since the the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission did have recommendations for us to continue. Looking at sustainability options and analysis. And then, of course, we've done the the matrix of the town hall project with the other two. Purchase options that Todd had mentioned and RJ will cover that. And then, yes, the the story polls are up if. Which I think is really a an excellent way to. After all the discussion around looking at plans and two dimensional and some three dimensional renderings, this, it really gives you a sense of what this. Facility we're talking about looks like and and feels like.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Yeah, I would concur. It's been a, it's been an exciting process. Hard to believe it's been two and a half years, but it's been, it's been a great process. It's we've. It's amazing how it's changed from our our early visions of what town hall we may be and what we've got today. I think it's been a. Real collaborative and enjoyable process. So I'm just going to give, well, first, before we go project interview, I'll give two more shout outs to staff. And the three Musketeers, Tracy, Rebecca and Lorena, who kept all the public noticing out there and. Really kept our our town website, our town project website up to date. You can go to that, go to our website and see all the meetings. That took place and look at the old agendas, look at the old minutes, look at the old videos. So if there's any, you know, anything you want to see. Please go to the town project webpage for that information. I'm just going to give a quick overview, you know, mainly for folks who haven't been involved at all or just slightly involved in terms of, you know, what the project is. Total project, the existing area that's going to be remodeled is approximately thirty four hundred square feet. And that's basically the second. The second level of the existing town hall. We're going to leave the lower level pretty much as is. New construction rating about seventy, seventy five hundred square feet to the east, you know, towards the fire station. That'll be a two, a two story structure for the total project area of just under eleven thousand square feet. Main level is going to consist of a brand new public plaza, which will be an incredible community asset to the town, about two thousand square feet. We'll have a new council chambers, meeting room that'll be able to sit approximately ninety five people. Have a much larger and. Completely ADA compatible and friendly public permitting center. At the street level. So you walk straight from Tamil Pious Avenue to that permitting center. Or or you'll head up from the, from the parking lot via stairs or elevator to that permit center, which will be. Staffed by, you know, building, planning and public works of one, a one stop shop for everybody and as well as finance. And basically everybody in in town hall, if you need to see. Lower level, again, adding administrative offices and then a central lobby connecting both levels. Show you a floor plan. This is the the Tamil Pious Avenue level, you know, walking from the street, you walk into the public plaza here. Take a left and into the main area here and we'll have the public counter. Again, large public counter serving and then you have a good, a large number of staff will be right here, easily accessible to take care of the public. If you continue to go through, take a right, there'll be a main lobby here, kind of a waiting area for people are gathering for a meeting. Restrooms and then the council chambers here. Council chambers and then back to this will be a small conference room if you're private meetings or or private conferences. Related to council or or related to anything working with the town. So that's your main level floor plan. The lower level, you know, accessible off of the parking lot. This is our existing town hall. Again, pretty much remains the same. As you heard, it's in, it's in, it's in pretty bad shape. So we're just going to. Leave it there, use it for storage, variety of different things. Adding elevator lobby area and new stairs to bring you up to the second level. Coming on here, again, all ADA accessible. This is your main area for for staff that aren't, you know, interacting with the public. You know, directly on a, you know, hourly basis. There's approximately seven, seven to nine offices here, small conference room, other workstations, break room. Public restrooms for staff as well. So that's a quick overview of the, of the lower and upper level floor plans. Looking at the architecture, just a brief look at the the roof plan, you know, existing town hall stays with a flat roof. We extend a gable roof out to here and then one, one parallel to Tamil Pious and then another ridge perpendicular to Tamil Pious. And then plaza here in the middle. Couple, there are a couple of different images, because we did, we played around with the roofs quite a bit. At one point, we had two gables here facing the plaza. And we decided and planning commission agreed that I think this one simple gable. Leading into the town council chambers is is the best view for that. Another gable issue is, at one point, we were talking about two gables here, that I think the planning commission. Recommended to simplify instead of these two gables here, just to have one and I'll show you an image of that. In fact, that's. That's the image that you see in the, in the first part of the presentation. This one here, we just have one gable, again, just just to simplify it. And then, so that's, this is your, your pedestrian street view. Again, the tree is really the surrounding element, focusing on the trees in the public plaza. Town hall itself gets a facelift as well, ADA accessible ramp and then stairways up to the. To the plaza from the street level. Here are some heights in the top of, you know, top of the redwoods, top of the flagpoles, highest point of the structure. As you may recall, way back, at one point, we had a three story structure. We've really brought this down quite a bit. And if you had a chance to look at the story polls, looking from this view. You can't, you can hardly stand near the story polls. You really just, you see this and that's about it because the trees really block a lot of it. This back view, the north elevation, have this line here that shows where our height was at one point back in April. Of twenty twenty, so just about a year ago, we brought that down in respect and and. Hearing comments from the neighbors to try to minimize the impact. But the stairway inside here, and again, this is kind of a back, back facing the parking lot. Corner view of the northeast perspective, bringing in that light, have lots, lots of good views. This is that conference room. This is the council chambers, you know, there's talk of needing the council chambers to be, you know, dark for presentations. Not having light bleed out into the neighborhood at night, but also wanting it to be a nice space during the day. So I think we have a good. A good compromise there. And east and west elevations, again, showing the the earlier height. West elevation, you know, not structurally, not a big change, but again, changing that facade. Making, bringing, tying in the the windows to the new building. And then this is the the east elevation here. South perspective, again, a lot of talk about how to integrate the old building with the new. Lots of various discussions and and I think we've come across, come up with a nice solution that that blends, keeps, keeps some of the old. But blends in well with the new. In terms of sustainability, it's always been a, an issue. We've always been a focus, not an issue, but a focus on how can we make this more. Most sustainable building possible, preserve the redwood trees, photovoltaic panels. EV charging stations, bicycle park, parking and cool roofs. Everything will comply with California green, green building standards. As Adam mentioned, we've done two, you know, in depth energy analyses, spoken with, worked with Peter Schwartz. On just maximizing the sustainability of of this whole project. And going for, you know, zero net energy and and potentially zero net carbon, which is what that's, that's second study revealed. As Adam mentioned, SEQA document, initial study, mitigating negative declaration was done. We had had numerous comments, addressed all those comments in our response to comments, which is required by law. Including some of the comments that came in for this meeting. And so those are all on the webpage and available to be reviewed by anyone who would like. And I think that concludes my segment of it, but again, exciting project and. Welcome to address any questions that council or the public have. With that, I think I'll turn it over to RJ.
Great, thank you. Next slide. So following the last council meeting, yeah, one of the theme requests was to further analyze. Options one and two. And so we we've simplified it down to the town hall project and the potential purchase of one oh one Nellon and Hunt Plaza. A lot of that focus initially was was based on costs. And so as you can see, there's, there's a similar range for the overall costs. I also don't want to lose sight, there is some lease revenue that is in the second to farthest right column that is not factored into that equation. So I want to be upfront and transparent about that. Those are, you know, potential revenue streams moving forward with each of those options. But really, in addition to costs, we wanted to highlight, you know, what we've been hearing for the last two plus years, you know, is it meeting the goals of the town and the community? And so we established some, some additional metrics based on that, you know, the, those goals we keep hearing. And so one, it's, it's really more a metric of of vulnerability or resilience. And and why we think about resilience, we're, I'm thinking, you know, seismic flood events, fire, power shutdown, those things. And although we have it as a flood zone as kind of one primary metric, the narrative does further go into, into discuss some of those other things. As Phil mentioned, you know, it was definitely harped on over and over the, the need for green, sustainable infrastructure and and not just, you know, to do what's, you know, kind of the the up and up for, you know, the, the times right now, but really kind of set an example with the community. And that was important to, to many of the, the residents and our council and we agree as well. Civic pride and amenities. And when I think about that, it's, you know, you know, a lot of that is is location and kind of bringing the community together. And then I'll discuss kind of the pros and cons of that. And then second, the last item was government efficiency and just the ability for us as government staff to serve the public the most efficient way and have them be able to interact with us in the most efficient way. So as I go through each one of them, I'll kind of cover each option across the board. But so town hall, it's, it's not in a FEMA flood zone. And actually, the structure would be well above the base flood elevation. So that would give it, you know, good marks on the flood zone side. It's not in a wooie. It would be built, you know, with all those, you know, kind of home hardening elements that you would want to resist wildfires. It's going to be a steel frame building, so it's going to be a lot more robust to a seismic event. So, you know, you know, it's not going to be built to the level of a hospital, but it still is going to be more resilient than the other two structures and and in all likelihood would be there to serve the community post a seismic event, which was one of the, the goals of this effort. We also talk about green and sustainable infrastructure. It's really going to be at the, the, you know, the cutting edge of what's out there. I do want to mention that the lower end of the cost range listed does assume a zero net energy. And we do have some kind of other add-ons, including zero net carbon, that will get it to that upper range. And and we'd like to really spend more time on that at a, at a future discussion and and reserve that, although we can touch on it today. So civic pride and amenity, it's, you know, as Phil mentioned, incorporating that plaza around the redwoods, having that open public counter space, really making it inviting to to have people come in and and work with staff to attain their permits, work through whatever projects they're, they're interested in, also interact with council in the, in the chambers and and, you know, any other community events that would take place there. Proximity, it's, it's right there to, you know, old town square, town park. So it's really a central location and and a, and a great location for the historical town site. Moving on to 101 Nellin. Oh, actually, I actually want to address one other comment. There also was a comment about, you know, considering a full demo of the existing building. And at this stage, we, we did look at that a little bit. I am going to have Ron comment on that some. In a nutshell, we felt that would add more than a million dollars, one to two million dollars on the overall scope. We would likely end up with about a thousand square foot smaller building, although it would be brand new and would be kind of state of the art. And Ron, are you able to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so in looking at the existing town hall location, we're looking at a remodel cost, oh, this would be a new, excuse me, of about nine and a half million to ten and a half million was where it was netting out. We took a look at our cost estimate for our new building, of which we had figures for new construction and remodel construction. If we demo the existing building, there's about a $200,000 demolition cost, we're estimating about quarter million dollars for demolition and figuring about a $750 per square foot times eleven thousand square feet is how we, we got our, our numbers.
Thank you. So moving back over to the other two options, so 101 Nellin, fairly new building, it's built in circa 2000. So it, it's also built above the base foot elevation, which is a FEMA metric, although it is in the flood plain. Given that year of construction, it does have some of those more contemporary green sustainable infrastructure features such as solar panels. It is a stucco facade, so it would be more resilient to fires. It's got double pane windows, so it's going to be more energy efficient on that perspective. So it does hit some of those pieces that we would on, would want on, on, through our goals exercise. It is on the northernmost side of town, so not very centrally located. So it's, it's not going to be the most efficient from a government efficiency, efficiency standpoint or a kind of civic pride standpoint when you compare it to being right there next to town park and old town square. We would have to do a lot of tenant improvements to try to get the same level of amenities with the permit counter and council chambers. So, you know, a little uncertainty on that respect. Some of the offices or windows on the second floor do have some views of the bay or Mount Tam, so there might be an opportunity to incorporate some of that kind of those Mount Tam views and and kind of bring that into that civic pride element. And we do believe the foundations are, 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 are very adequate, so that would potentially, you know, we do think it, it could serve in a, you know, post, you know, you know, event, you know, say of a fire or earthquake, you know, perhaps in a similar capacity to the, the town hall. So want to make sure that's understood. And then moving on to 240 Towne Vista or Hunt Plaza. So this one is in a flood plain. It is below the base foot elevation. If this were a new construction, it would be required to be above that or have flood barriers. So, you know, it'd be a decision we would have to have, whether it's triggered or voluntarily, whether we want to invest in that protection. It was constructed in nineteen seventy five, so the, you know, on a green and sustainable infrastructure side, it's, it's, it's going to be pretty minimal. You know, I, it's, it's, it's a, so it's, it's not going to, it doesn't have solar panels and a lot of the other things are going to be questionable and kind of based on that era of construction. It does have an interior plaza, so, you know, there is some potential for some of those outdoor mingling opportunities that we're, we're, we're talking about on the town hall edition. So do you want to highlight that as a positive? It's also next to our corp yard, so there is some government efficiencies there being approximated to our public works maintenance staff. And then, yeah, on, on the construction site, it's also timber construction, so you're not likely as resilient to seismic events and and those sorts of things. So that's, that's really a kind of initial summary of the three options and then obviously happy to further discuss and answer any questions you may have. Moving on to just a real, I would call it an introduction on zero net carbon, and I'm certainly not the expert, and I know we have many in the audience. So they can probably speak to this better than I can, but really, we're looking at completely shifting away from any reliance on natural gas. So any of the furnaces, any appliances would be all electric in a zero net carbon situation. There was another comment here, and and there's also potential that that would lead us to investing in a, in a more insulated shell, so to speak. So likely, you know, potentially triple pane windows and and really the highest grade insulation to really capture all those items. And that, oh, that was the slide I was looking for. Yeah, so it would, yeah, full electrification, all operational energy used from onsite and or offsite renewable energy. And that would potentially lead us to, yeah, the, the, you know, higher grade windows and insulation. And with that, I am going to turn it over to staff or council.
Great, thanks, RJ. So is that all of the, does that complete the staff presentation?
Yeah, I was, it's just good, yeah, I think that that does. You know, and and obviously Ron's here as well, if you wanted to hear more about specifically the architecture piece, but we were going to leave that for the Q and A, but want to recognize Ron's contributions as well. And he, he's, you know, expertise in, in, in the design of this structure.
I guess maybe I'll add one more, as we look at, as we went through the analysis, I don't know, it really did feel apparent that the, the goals were, you know, definitely met at a much higher level when we look at the town hall edition project. And knowing there were comparable costs and, you know, setting the example, you know, hitting on kind of all cylinders with civic pride and government efficiency, that was just, that was my takeaway from, from the comparison analysis.
Great. Okay, well, thank you guys all for that very detailed presentation and thanks for the really thorough staff report. That's incredibly helpful to us. It's clear that you really took our comments to heart and and our requests for additional information on this. I mean, I think this side by side comparison matrix is incredibly helpful, so thank you, guys. We're going to open this up to the council for questions now, and then when that's finished, we'll go to public comment and then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start us off with questions? David?
I've got a couple of small questions. In the schematic drawings of the building, it appeared to me as though only a small amount of the area of the flat roof only were, was devoted to solar. Is that a pure schematic? Has any consideration been given by an actual solar person to evaluate the load of this projected facility and how much of that load is met with solar energy? I, I can see that there's a lot more south facing area that is available, should it be wanted. The other small question is that I didn't notice, I'm surprised I didn't notice before, on the lower floor office schema, you have, you walked through and and showed some particularly, see, right in the center in the area of the the, the plaza above, you have some west facing and east facing, I'm sorry, south facing and east and and west facing window walls, it appears. What are those looking at? If that's in the level that's underneath the plaza above?
Yeah. I'm happy to look at, Ron, do you want to take this? But I will say they're actually looking out south, basically. And and when you stand and you actually look at the story poles, we, we strong the dimension of the first, but the first floor, where the first floor transitions into the second floor. So you, you actually have a, quite a bit of a, a view depending on how we landscape the street frontage out to the street. And so it's really about trying to get some actual natural light. It's underneath, yes, it's underneath the plaza, but it's actually, the plaza is well above the sidewalk level at the, at those locations. So there is an opportunity to try to achieve some natural light underneath the plaza.
So the, the plaza is a structure, it's not on the ground then.
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, okay, I'll just add to that. See, the retaining walls we saw at the lower level about the natural landscape, we didn't want to really interfere with the natural landscape around the redwood tree. So we have about a four or five foot high retaining wall and then the opportunity of windows above that. We were looking at kind of a, a fern rock garden underneath. We also have the ability to bring some skylights from the plaza to bring additional light down. Those are those rectangles there. Thought we could have a, a quiet garden view for staff as well as, as Adam was saying, the ability even to see all the way up to the sidewalk. And in terms of the solar load question, yeah, that, there were some studies done where we loaded up the south facing roofs handled load.
But this is just a schematic drawing and you haven't tried to render in the architectural drawings what a a real solar facility that serves, let's say, seventy five or eighty percent of the load at the facility are, right?
Well, the first energy study that, that we did, that Peter Pollard's group did, did develop some diagrams with more solar panels than we're showing schematically, as you point out on the roof tonight.
I, I'm just one who clearly thinks that they make a handsome addition for the public if they're on the south.
Yeah, to, to that point, so if we're using the, the, the numbers, there's potential that solar could be on additional roof panels, not just the ones that are listed as number two. And that was in one of the prior reports and just didn't make it onto this visual.
Great, okay, thank you, David. Who else has questions? Fred?
Uh, yeah, I like the matrix a lot because it really gives us a side by side comparison. But Todd, maybe you can address, because one thing I don't see on here is funding, as far as funding, financing and debt service. Are all three about the same, plus or minus?
Yes, we would use the same, the same funding mechanism, a private placement type of loan. And as you can see, the end of, the end result numbers are very similar. So regardless of any of these options, we'd use the same funding mechanism as outlined in the fiscal impact.
Okay, and then the, the five to six hundred thousand revenue from Hunt Plaza, that's all dependent on that property being, I want to say a hundred percent occupied, correct? If there was a vacancy, would we have to dig into operating funds to cover expenses and or debt service?
It depends what you're comparing it to. So I guess if you're comparing, you know, the total cost to any of the other options, you know, you would have additional revenue there, right? And so you just, if you had openings, you would have less revenue. So it depends how we build our annual budget to reflect that. That five to six hundred thousand dollar lease revenue number for Hunt Plaza is showing that entire south section of the building, which is about, I think, eleven or twelve thousand square feet being fully leased. And then, and then the town staff being in the, in the north section, the other half of the building. And so you're right, if we have lease vacancies, it would be less. You also have on, you know, 101 Nellin or Hunt Plaza, you also have taxes, you have maintenance costs. And, you know, and again, those are probably, I think, I'd have to go back to my report, but I think it was in the $300,000 range annually that you have to take into consideration as well.
Okay, and if I can remember also, I think you mentioned last, that property is in bankruptcy, right? So the process could be prolonged if we did look at it.
So this specific property isn't in bankruptcy, but the pro, the owners of this property are in bankruptcy. So there's a number of properties. They are motivated to sell this property. There are no other potential owners right now. And so that is the second part of this question for the, for the council to consider, if you were to consider an offer, we should discuss that in closed session, but I think there are opportunities. We gave a range of seven and a half to eight and a half million, because that is, they are asking about eight and a half million. We did a third party. We did a third party analysis on the building and the estimates came in at about seven and a half. Staff believes there's more room in that low number, and that would be a discussion for closed session. But I think there is an opportunity there.
It does also kind of beg the question, if nobody else is interested in the property, why might that be?
Yeah, you know, to this point, and I know you didn't ask it, but I, you know, RJ and I, you know, RJ gave a really good education for us today. But he gave me an hour education the other day on site of really looking at these two buildings. And then really circling back to like, reminding me of when we did, the first thing we did when we thought about town hall. We said, what publicly owned properties do we have in town or other potential properties that we could purchase and build town hall? And, and what are the pros and cons? And it really took, brought us back to the civic pride part, but really the governmental efficiency. It's something that you can't take for granted. And I, you know, I guess I have through this process of the importance of being close, not only centralized in town, but to town, to the town park and to the community center, not only for normal events, but heaven forbid, we need to do something. You know, the PSPS, you know, shutdowns or any disaster anytime, it's so important to be close together. And that jumped out at me. And the other one was Hunt Plaza. RJ talked about it, not being in the flood zone, but also the, the current height of that building where it's at in the flood zone. That's a big concern that I, I hadn't heard until RJ and I were out at the, at the site and he was really breaking that down for me. And for me, honestly, I felt like possibly for, for me to recommend as the manager to the council, Hunt Plaza, you know, what if you could have that for six million or 6.5 with that seven million, is that something that would push Hunt Plaza to the top of the list? What I'm starting to be concerned about is what we're hearing from RJ, the state of the building, where it is in the flood zone, and really the work and infrastructure projects that are going to come before us over the next decade or so on a town owned facility that we're leasing. It's bringing me back to being really ultra conservative from a town perspective, the lessons learned in the past. I'm starting to throw some red flags up, but it's good. We're vetting this, right? This has been a multi-month conversation. And so I have some more concerns today than I have in the past. But I want counsel to hear it as well. And again, if it's something we need to discuss further in a closed session, we're positioned to do so, so.
Thanks. And I probably realized also, I think JR mentioned this, and you did somewhat also, it sounds like there may be a lot of deferred maintenance on that building also, that down the road, we're going to have, it's going to be a cost to us.
Yeah, the big upfront cost for Hunt Plaza and not in for 101 Nolan, but really Hunt Plaza is to have that, that meeting room, the community meeting room, council chambers. There's going to be a lot of work. We're going to have to use the second story, so we're going to have to put in an elevator. So those are the upfront really big cost. And then moving forward, when RJ walks the building, he just starts pointing stuff out to you. That's five years, that's two years, that's 10 years. How much does that cost, RJ? And you start to do it, and me being a, you know, a manager, I'm like worried about the budget. Like, I'm starting to get concerned. So Hunt Plaza has some things that we're going to have to really be worried about from a maintenance standpoint.
Yeah, it's going to add up after a while. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Fred. Great questions. Who else would like to ask any questions of staff? Yeah, Charles?
So I think this goes back to one of the comments from the architect. In the cost analysis of the existing portion being renovated versus a full scrape demo. I guess for staff and him, you know, can we just continue to, if, you know, we move forward with approving this, can we, can we still carry both options and vet it out a little more in depth? And see if there's other really essential kind of uses and benefits to, to scraping it, especially because it sounds like every time, you know, this building basically is revealing itself as we go, right? With the roof having to be torn off, with all the electrical having to be replaced. You know, just the efficiencies of, of using new material and recycling the old, like, I just don't want to give that up. Especially because if there, you know, if we could do the same kind of analysis of what that million dollars really is buying us, you know, in a, in a kind of cost benefit matrix like this, so we can really make the decision. I would find, I would still like to pursue that because I don't, ultimately, if you go in with a, you know, and just bulldoze the whole building versus like, you know, surgically slicing it into a million different pieces, I can't imagine that it's going to cost 200,000 more to bulldoze it. So I, and then the other one that I just, you know, it was, there was an additional year to the, you know, just for demoing that part of the building and building new. And I'd really like to understand the schedule better before I just accept that number. I just, you know, I understand that it might complicate the process, but I, I'm still not convinced on that. So if you want to speak to that, or, you know, if, if that's a possibility, and, you know, if I'm not catching all the nuances of those kind of sound bites, a little bit more would help.
Yeah, I could speak a little bit to the process, and I think that is a lot, some of what we considered, and RJ, you can fill in if that's 80% of what we're talking about in terms of additional time. But obviously, we've gone down the road in a, with a process focused on an existing, you know, remodeling the existing structure. So if we're, if we're now going to consider basically a scraping and rebuild, it's not only sort of what is the design changes and how do we go back through some of the process that we went through to get here at the planning commission and other community meetings perhaps, but also the SEQA analysis would also need to be looked at again and ensure that we're, obviously, if you're going into the dirt, you know, and scraping, there's different impacts, potential impacts to consider as part of that. So SEQA is part of that as well. So that's, that's a lot of the time. And, and obviously, I guess there's the level, to get it to the level of analysis and study that we've done for this project, it's just, it's just redoing some of those analyses for, for a different project. But, you know, obviously, that's, that, that's why we're putting it out here. There's, there is still a, obviously, we can do that.
Yeah, and, and to your point, Charles, I, yeah, I mean, I think the, the demo number was pretty conservative. I think it's not quite that. But it, yeah, to Adam's point, it very much is the, the whole process and, and time, and then we're temporary staffing, and then we're going back through all the steps. And then, but we're also able to build, you know, the side by side structure with that seismic, seismic joint. So there's, and there's really minor seismic retrofitting, there would be some stiffening, but it's, it's a glorified two-story home, timber home. So it's not, it's not going to be crazy seismic retrofit, so it shouldn't be too extensive on that front. But I hear what you're saying, you know, if we're starting new, that I think that would be a much.
I just, I just asked, just asking the question, and I definitely appreciate that, you know, that feedback about, about those things, so.
Yeah, great, great question, Charles. I was wondering the same thing. Bob, do you have any questions, sir? Okay, my only question that I, I've just out of curiosity, I was just wondering, we were talking about blending the old building and the new. If we go to like one of those 3D views that shows kind of the, the whole thing, I was just kind of curious what it might cost to throw some sort of like mansored roof on top of the old building. You know, some sort of like four sided hip roof with a flat top, so that it, it just kind of blends in more with it, you know, it has kind of like the same roof line viewed from any angle as the, as the main portion of the building. I don't know if we're able to do like a real quick back in the napkin estimate. I'm just kind of curious, you know, whether that's something that, that we might consider. And, and if so, you know, maybe that gets into, to Charles's question again, you know, does that, does that impact too much, you know, the work that we've already done?
I believe that came up in the process. Go ahead. I don't know if you want to jump on.
No, yeah, Ron, maybe you can speak to it. And I think Jared, we did sort of an analysis also of, of, do we want to go into the roof and, and impact the structural, you know, the structure of the roof by, by doing that? But Ron, yeah, definitely was something we looked at through the process.
I was just going to say, early on, that was a, an early thought. Over time, I think budgetary concerns started peeling that, that roof off, and then there were some structural concerns. It's a viable, it's still a viable idea to explore.
Okay, then I'll leave that, I'll leave that alone for now, and I'll tell myself that maybe that's something that a future council will come back and add on at some point, so.
Well, yeah, and I think, you know, a lot of, both of those ideas, you know, I think at various times, you know, budget was something that was driving us to be conscious of
Of course.
of the costs of the, of the project as we went through different iterations. And so, you know, that's ultimately was, was definitely a driving force, along with other things that we've mentioned tonight. But it was right up there with, with everything, you know, sustainability and, and design and neighborhood context and civic pride and all those things. But at the end of the day, we knew we'd be sitting in front of you as well and asking, you know, the council to, in the, in the town to expend significant funds here.
One of the comments I read in the SEQA was that the existing building's already inside the setbacks, you know, because it was built before there was even kind of. So I think when you start raising the roof up higher and really changing its impact on that street, and so close to the street too.
Oh, okay.
That, that would, that, you know, that, that we might not get what we want out of that.
All righty, well, I will leave that alone then. Are there any other questions from council members before we turn this over to the public? All righty, if not, let's see, would it be possible for us to stop sharing the screen for a little bit? I'm just, I'm not able to see the list of folks on the line here and see who's got their hands up, I believe.
Peter, Peter Schwartz.
Great, oh, perfect, there we go. Thank you. Okay, fantastic. All right, so we are going to public comment on this item now. If you would like to make any comments on the, the question of what to do about town hall, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcml.org. We're going to start with Peter Schwartz and then go to Pat Rivasio. And, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of hands come up. I'm wondering if we should do two minutes a person instead of three minutes. I, here, let me ask anybody who's planning on, on making public comment, if you would be so kind as to go ahead and raise your hand now, just that we can accurately gauge how many folks plan on commenting, and then we can kind of budget time accordingly. That would be really helpful. All righty, let's see, we've got. All right, I think probably best if we move this to two minutes apiece for public comment on this item. But of course, anybody is always welcome to submit fuller comments to us via email or call us anytime. We've already gotten a lot of great written public comment, and we certainly invite more. So with that, we're going to start with Peter Schwartz and then go to Pat Rivasio.
Great, thank you. In my two minutes, first thing I want to do is an acknowledgement. I wish to applaud the efforts of staff and the town council on this project relative to community engagement. It's been very rewarding to see such involvement from the, the town and town government also. Just a quick comment, a couple of quick comments on 240 Tamil Vista as an option. In my mind, looking at the numbers and looking at the building, it doesn't seem like a viable option, given the sort of stated policies and goals of the town relative to sustainability. And I think fundamentally, there's some critical problems in just accessing that site. It's in one of the worst traffic zones in, in the county, just trying to get around that area. And I think, you know, access by the public to get there in a convenient way, entry and exit in and out of there is difficult. Not exactly a convenient pedestrian location. And then seismic issues, you know, the building built in 1975. And the minute you touch it relative to current Title 24 is you're going to have to bring up major systems to current code with below out your $35 a square foot estimate on renovation. And so I think the numbers really wouldn't pan out. Additionally, just trying to upgrade the HTRAC to approximate something that could handle a COVID era air quality for anyone who occupies the building is problematic. So it's, I think it's throwing good money after bad would be my way to describe that. And in terms of messaging, it really doesn't speak to the town of Coeur d'Alene's commitment to sustainability by going after a site like.
Got it.
And I understand it's cheap, but, okay, on to the positive side of things.
Peter, sorry, I'm sorry, that, that is time.
Okay, give me 10, 10 seconds.
Uh, yeah, please, please wrap up.
Yeah, so I vote for the zero net carbon since California policy, national policy, global policy is headed towards that. And I think it would be short sighted not to go that way. And thank you, and.
Thank you very much, Peter. Sorry to cut you off. Thank you very much for your comments. And, and of course, if you want to submit any further comments, please feel free to do so, publiccomment@tcml.org. We're going to go to Pat Rivasio next, and then Peter Hensel.
Okay, I'm going to talk really fast to get it all in. First of all, I love that you're doing this project. I think it's great that Coeur d'Alene is thinking big for the long term. We're going to set an example for sustainability in a beautiful building. And if you were to go to another building, you'd still have to deal with what are we going to do with town hall? So that would be a whole nother mess. But I think the test that I would like to put to the architect is that it should kind of look like it was always there. I think it needs to feel and look like Coeur d'Alene and be timeless. And I think those big white panels, they look really trendy right now. I saw them on the hotel, the best western in building. And I don't know what they are, but I think in 10 years, they're going to look totally dated, like that was a COVID era thing. But, so that aside, my big question is that the, if you are, most of you are already aware that the Parks and Recreation Commission is currently working with an architect to create a really smart and economical renovation and expansion of the community center. Those with history in town know that there have been two major community efforts to figure out how best to expand the center so that multiple classrooms or, or multiple events can be held at one time. And our, this architect is working to figure all this out and, and do it in an economical way, so that we can have more events and classes concurrently, and also have a more beautiful community great room that opens up and captures the views of the park and our majestic mountain. And we can make more money renting it for weddings and things as well. So we're developing these visions. We're kind of running behind you guys on the, on the town hall. So what I would love to seek on behalf of the community is that this project, our project, become sort of wrapped up in, in this one, in that we are doing overall facilities planning for Coeur d'Alene. And that you understand that we did, you know, the rec center kind of got set aside when the police station was built. And now we're going to get set aside while the fire town hall is built. I just want some kind of guarantee that the town center, I mean, that the community center comes next. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Pat. Much appreciated. We're going to go to Peter Hensel next, and then Lisa.
All righty, so you guys can hear me. Yeah, anyway, I, I do like the project. My only concern in the beginning was about neighborhood parking, because we're kind of maxed out here on Willow. But Todd sort of satisfied my concerns about that, you know, with the long range possible, possibility of moving the fire station. He seems to have a good grasp of the futurism of, of this all. I just kind of wonder, you know, I'm kind of like Councilmember Lee, I'm sort of thinking it might be better to just scrape the whole thing. Because if we really want this building to last 100 years, I mean, that, that's kind of a guarantee if we're just building from the ground up. But here, all of a sudden, now we got, you know, a roof that leaks, we got mold, we got asbestos, I mean, what, what else we got, you know? So you might think about that. I, I don't want to torpedo this project. I like to move it forward, and we don't want to be stepping back either because it just seems like a waste of time after all, you know, the effort that we put in. But on the other hand, we want to get it right. So, you know, I just think that we should have some more analysis of, you know, well, if we really did scrape and bulldoze a thing, you know, how much more would it cost, you know, and, you know, the positives about that. I mean, I'm not so worried about cost. I really think that it's going to be a source of real community pride. And I was talking with David, you know, the other night, reminding him that his neighbor, you say that Coeur d'Alene has an inferiority complex. I was talking with David, you know, the other night, reminding him that his neighbor, you say that Corder Madera has an inferiority complex. Well, this is a chance to really address that, to do something that really is great for the town, that gives us some coherence and pride. And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you so much, Peter. We're going to go to Lisa next, followed by Michael. There are two Michaels with their hands up. This is going to be the one with the capital M.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so first, I don't want to discount the process. I feel like, you know, it's been two and a half years. I moved down the street on Willow. Fairly very familiar with the two properties too that you guys are looking at. But I do have to say two things. One is I'm still really concerned about parking. I mean, if you're going to have a 95 seating capacity, I know that you guys did a parking assessment during COVID, but you know, living here, I know how many people in general, when you've got the big heated projects that people come and they park on Willow and Tampa Pius. I know that the Planning Commissioner Bundy mentioned about just parking across the street over where Bread and Roses is, but we manage that property. And I know that the owners would not be happy about just having random people park at that property. The other thing is, is I also concur with looking at, and we've basically, my husband and I have been talking about this all along, is I don't see a reason for keeping the existing building. I agree with Council Lee that we need to look at that as an option. I mean, you guys are talking about Hunt Plaza having deferred maintenance and all of this. But yet you want to keep something that has asbestos, a bad roof, mold that you have to remediate. It just seems a little sketch to really consider that. So I would say that it would be good to kind of delve into that a little bit more and take a good, hard look at that. I know you guys have been working hard for a long time on that. I also think that if you guys decided to move, those two buildings would probably be very motivated to sell because they've been vacant for a while. So that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you so much. We're going to go to Michael next, and then Annette. Are you there, Michael? I see you are unmuted. All right, potential audio issues there. So we're gonna come back to Michael in a little bit. I'm gonna gonna take his talking off here. We're going to go to Annette and then Barbara.
How's that? How's that level, guys? Good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, not to be contrary, and I'm sure Todd knows where I'm coming from, I would like us to step back and look at the cost of the whole project, and I frankly don't care where it is. Eight and a half to $9.2 million exceeds our whole capital budget for this year, which we have a lot of projects. And I want to remind everybody, not that you've probably forgotten, that we have a pension fund that's with an unfunded accrued accrued liability of in excess of $20 million. And we're talking about housing, much as I like them all, about 20 to 20 to 24 employees. So my option, particularly during this time of COVID, is to just backburner the whole thing until at least we get through this fiscal year. I don't think we take as as much advantage of the rec center as we could, not that we're getting together anymore. But it just seems an extraordinary amount of money for quote unquote civic pride. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much, Annette. We're going to go to Barbara next, and then we will try Michael again, and hopefully he's got his. Barbara has just, oh, there's Barbara again. Okay, let's bring Barbara on here. Oop, she is disappearing and then reappearing. So I I'm not sure. Let's try and get her on here. And Barbara, you should be, there you go.
I'm here, sorry.
Perfect.
Had a little trouble. So I just want to go back. I've been a resident of Corder Madera for 27, 28 years, and I just want to like, I like what you guys are doing. I'm not opposed to the Town Hall remodel, but I want you to look very carefully at what past town councils have done. There have been some terrible decisions in the past. For instance, we bought that that terrible shopping center behind Town Center at above market value because of Michael Lappert. It was a terrible decision. And and it really put the town in a terrible position. And we bought the house next door to Town Center on Willow. And what's going on with that? So I just want to know what do you, what's the story with those other properties when you're doing all these Town Hall remodels? Like, are you taking into consideration? Are you like ignoring the past? I mean, you can't ignore the past. You cannot. So I like to have an answer.
Great. Okay, thank you very much, Barbara. All right, we're going to try Michael again. Hopefully, he's able to speak now. Let's see. And and so that's Michael with a capital M. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was playing with my dials. That's not dirty. I'm sorry. I'll be quick because I don't know you have only two minutes. First, I'm glad the alternate site analysis proved of no benefit because I think that would be a disaster. Secondly, given the assumptions that Ron Cap was given or created programming, I think it, he came up with a very good solution. I have some basic problems with that solution that go to the assumptions. And that is that we don't need Town Hall that's three times the size of the existing. We, I think it's a mistake to buy into a project design that can't be phased. All this has to be built at once because it's all interconnected. And the building is incredibly complex. And I'm glad to hear people, David Kuhnheart, reflect on the idea of this sunken grotto, which the office, the stair stepped lower offices look out on. This is a very complex. I don't understand why we're doing it. It makes that new building very expensive. And I think my main objection is so glad to hear people talking about scraping the corner building. I go beyond that to say, why are we not putting the most identifiable, important part of this project on the corner where it's been? And we could build a much cheaper phased building and use the corner for the for the town council chambers, which I think is a much better solution. It's a start over. I'm sorry, but those are my sincere beliefs.
Got it. Got it. Okay, loud and clear. Thank you, Michael. And Michael has also written us numerous, very thoughtful emails, which will all be entered into the the public record with regards to this item, as will everybody else's emails that they that they've sent in. We're going to go next to Michael with a lowercase m, followed by Werner Mossen.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Super. Michael here, I'm a neighbor on Willow Avenue, and my compliments to the team here, to Adam, Phil, and Ron. I think the building looks great. It incorporates the history of Corder Madera with the materials, the wood. But there's also some great classic contemporary features here that we're looking at, too. I think it's a very nice design. It'll, I think it'll look great for 50 plus years. There's a, some very nice positive things here, too. I think that if if the 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 town moved to, say, Hunt Plaza or 100 Nellin, what would happen to the site? What would happen to the neighborhood? Wow. I mean, I got to believe, and I'm in the commercial real estate business, have been for many years. There's a surrounding area radius of about two blocks that the values of those homes are going to be impacted by a good 10%. A nice new Town Hall, a flagship there in our neighborhood. Wow, great statement. Whereas if it's vacant and it's just a drive by, we're not, that isn't a location that's right on the freeway. It isn't a kind of a classic commercial property location. It's a special Town Hall location. I think we need to just do our best to make that site here work for us. Both Hunt Plaza and 100 Nellin, when you do an aerial view and you look at them, there's a lot of dated infrastructure there. The air conditioning systems on the roof, the elevators, etc., the floor plates. It's going to be a very, very expensive episode to try to rework those buildings and get them tenant ready. And oh, by the way, they're in a flood zone. So 20 years from now, with sea level maybe 20 inches higher and then have a storm surge, wow, that won't be good.
Got it.
Any rate, thank you for your time and my compliments to you for a great, a great looking structure.
Thank you very much, Michael. We're going to go to Werner next, followed by Hoff.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, first of all, it's been a great process to date, and it continues to be, thanks to the staff, to the council, to the design consultants. As some of you know, I was part of the initial working committee that had three meetings on it. And much that I and others on the committee wanted to see in the process has indeed transpired. I think that's great. What I really wanted to talk about at this point, though, is I share both of the topics that David Kuhnheart raised. I think there really is an issue with the entry plaza essentially blocking the light to the lower level. I think perhaps a bigger cutaway of that plaza could could provide more light to the lower level. And then more importantly, I think that what we really need to consider is maximizing our ability to collect solar energy, that we really can achieve net energy through the use of more solar panels, as well as than battery backup system. And I think to do that, I think we would consider really flat roofs across the entire building. And it could be three different heights of flat roofs, maybe the lowest being over the existing building, a second level height over the connector that goes over to the meeting area to the the council chambers. That would then have the highest roof. I don't think we need to be married to the sentimentality of sloped roofs, etc. I think we have to look to the future and maximize hardcore issues of energy needs and sustainability. But kudos to everyone. I think the process has been great and continues to be great. And with that, thanks for the ability to make some comments.
Great, thank you so much, Werner. And we're going to go to Hoff next.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for taking. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I'm glad a lot of the public is interjecting, and I'm glad that Pat Rivasio mentioned that they're going to be doing rec center renovations as well, because that's one of my biggest topics with this building. We've already hit on the fact that that it's a lot easier to scrape a building a lot flat and do new construction. I've been in construction my whole life and tons of remodels. And whenever you're adding on to an old structure, it's always harder. Plus, as people have said, you don't know what type of problems you're going to have existing as you start to get into it. So I agree with the caller from two previous to me. I think you guys should really look at, you know, scraping it and starting over. And then talk about the use permit issue with the building, because at one point, we did hear that there might be different uses for the assembly room. And as Lisa and Peter have talked about, parking is our main issue here. Not we don't want the town people that we've always had here. We've gotten along well with everybody. But we certainly don't want strangers in at night. If this facility is going to be used, especially when the rec center is going to be redone. And thirdly, Ron, your gable that points towards our properties is all full of windows. So you know, why do there have to be so many windows on a north side where there's no light? If that is going to be the case, we were the ones who brought in the Cedars and Redwoods on Tampa Pius. That was our idea. And also the interjection of the Madrones. And if this project is going to go forward, I want everybody to know that we are going to assist that there be full blown trees.
Got it.
Property, just let me finish. Everyone else has done it. On the property, the yellow house to block all of that is coming our way down.
I'm sorry, we got to be fair to everybody else. We can't allow, you know, one one resident significantly more time than the others. But I totally understand. If you've got more to say, please do email.
Done, I'm done.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you very much for for giving your feedback. Appreciate it. We do not have any other hands up right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item from residents who have not already gotten a chance to speak here?
Aside from the two emails we received from residents who did speak, I did just receive an email from Peter Chase. And it's, so I don't, I'm not going to start the timer. But it says, after years of consideration and effort, the result is well considered and deserves to be brought to fruition. My construction experience tells me to put the effort into getting this project built with no reluctance and partial efforts. Give the town the best new building possible with the great courtyard, and let's get it done. Do not consider the other build out options as remodels in buildings like these are money pits. Thank you, Peter Chase.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And that was our our only email comment on this item.
Let me just refresh one more time. Yes, I believe so, unless something was was sent to another staff person that I hadn't received yet.
Oh, Todd?
No, I just, Mr. Mayor, when it gets time for staff, if you would like an overview from a couple of the comments specific to.
Yeah, that'd be great. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment now. No other hands up. Thank you to all the residents who joined us and and, you know, took a look, dove into to the packet here and into the the proposed design and the alternatives, and for all the great and insightful feedback that we just got, I would definitely ask Todd and staff to to go ahead and run through any of the particular comments from residents that they'd like to respond to.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to share my screen, and I just want to give a quick budget overview. Again, we talked about it at the last meeting. But it's the key to the conversation because we wouldn't be here today if we weren't in a position that we're currently in, that we've been talking about. And so when Annette DiSano, she's a member of the Finance ad hoc Subcommittee speaks, everyone on this call should listen. She's brilliant. She's been a huge part of our success and and what staff has been talking about at the council level over the past few years. Really, this discussion over the last four years and the work of the Finance Committee to the council, a lot of our policies and practices started with how do we build our reserves? How do we, how do we, what are we trying to accomplish in our services? And then what do we need financially to to provide those services, both short term and long term? Let's build up our reserve funds, and we need to solve the unfunded liability problem. And before you can do that, you can't have any conversations about infrastructure. It just doesn't matter. You can't operate as a government if you don't have that strategy. And so part of the discussion at the last meeting, and it's up on your screen right now, is really where's the financial health of those policies and practices over the last four years and moving forward? Well, we've we've built a $30 million funding stream that occurred. That's cash in the bank. And and it's not to brag. It's it's, this is our hard work, right? This is how we judge ourselves if we're financially stable. And so you have, again, it's a breakdown. You can see it there. I want to point to two things. In the middle, you see the pension trust and the retiree health trust. That's $7.5 million at the end of this fiscal year that's projected. That's important because what we did is through our practices, those are surplus funds. At the end of the year, we built that. That's important because what we did is through our practices, those are surplus funds. At the end of the year, we built that into our annual strategy to fund those. And we've built those up over a period of years. And then now we have the discussion and I, and I hope it was coming back to the council and the community in the coming months is the conversation about, you know, bonding, those funds and, and our unfunded liabilities and building a savings arbitrage of about $650,000. That can be used to build these funds further to fully fund CalPERS if they had underperform in any given year over the next 15 to 20 years to ensure that we solve the problem over the next two decades. Point me to another jurisdiction in the state of California that is in the position we are. We've used every tool in the toolbox. We've even gotten around the California rule that doesn't allow us to change retiree benefits from 3% at 50 to 55. We got around that by consolidating our public safety in both police and fire. So we've done every reform you possibly can per the law and we've built those strategies. And so I say that because it starts the conversation now of let's look at capital infrastructure. And so the sales tax measure was the first step in that. It built the 15 year plan. The 15, and it goes out another 15 years. Every 15 years, just recalculate this sheet. This is our revenue stream for the next 15 years. At the top is the sales tax fund. And so that's the discussion specific here. And it's important to what Barbara brought up. It's important to what Pat Revazio brought up. And it's important to what Annette was talking about. Look, do we have the money to do this? And is it at the expense of any other projects? And the answer is no, absolutely not. And so when we talk about facilities, the community center, you talk about, um, this town hall project. It's important that we focus and solve these now over the next five years, because as you'll hear, and as you've heard, when we talk about climate adaptation and all the fire mitigation and infrastructure needs of this town, we need to really focus on that 10, 15, 20 years out. As you look, now we're talking about the funding mechanism. And so what is the funding mechanism? How do we want to fund this project? And how do we come to that number? Well, we started it with, that's great. We, there's no reason to wait. COVID, pre-COVID, post-COVID, during COVID, it doesn't matter. We have town hall closed. We can't open town hall. We need to move our facility somewhere else now. And so the question is, what are our options? And so if you tell me I have to go buy trailers or I have to go lease space, well, I'm going to come back and share with you that it's about 450 to $550,000 a year in cost. I know now from my five bosses that you said you're not interested in that because it's a waste of taxpayer money, which your staff agrees. Council has directed staff through the community and the lessons learned in the past to solve all of our infrastructure problems. If we're going to put the time and effort and funding into it, we're going to solve it for the next 50 to 100 years to the best of our abilities. That's what's before you today. And so now the funding mechanism and looking at that, that sheet that I just showed you, the 15 year projection, let's use the leasing cost as a, kind of as a standard. Can we do the same or better? This is what we're going to do. We're going to do a 15 year debt service plan. We're going to put $2 million from the general fund. And we're going to put approximately $2 million from the sales tax measure fund down. And then we're going to fund four to five million. And we're going to do it over 15 years at the percentage rate that you see. It's in the about 2.75% range. And you can see the annual debt service. It's better than leasing. We, we can do better than leasing. So that's important to note, because when you go back to this long-term strategy, you can see it's not at the expense. Now, when we talk about the community center, which is a really exciting project, you know, and it's a multimillion dollar project, we can do something similar. It's not at the expense of any of the five-year capital improvement projects that we talked about. We're going to get Patty Stolier and her neighbors lights in a sidewalk and improve the streets in the next couple of years. Like all the promises we gave the community with the sales tax measure, we're absolutely going to deliver it. And I thought long and hard and I lose sleep over this. And I will go on the record as your town manager, I know that my reputation and my legacy is on the line with what I'm saying right now. If I didn't believe it, if I didn't do the analysis and research based on the great finance subcommittees and all the subcommittees that we have around town and our staff and our council and our great community members who have passion and care about this community, reminding us of the lessons learned. I, I wouldn't be here right now recommending this. I believe in it. I think this is the right step. And from a financial ass, from a financial decision-making process, we are positioned to make this decision and it's not at the expense of anything else. That's absolutely the truth and it's absolutely a fact. And I'll, and I'll jump on the table for it. So I just want to really make that clear. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Todd. That was really helpful. Um, okay. So we're going to open this up now to, to questions and comments from the council. We're just opening this up for, for our council discussion. Who would like to start us off? Charles?
So, uh, Todd, thanks for your comments. I wanted to, uh, follow on with what you were saying. I think I would just like to remind everyone that when we upgrade the lighting, we're going to save 1.7 million dollars, you know, in, in, you know, that's less, that's more than the interest payments on the bonding, right? And then, and then the, another 200. So there's other ways to, to save money. And then also, you know, I hear a lot of residents understand that the, the town hall is a functioning entity only for themselves. But the main reason we have so much capital funds to spend is because of the commercial enterprises that also happen in this town. And they have expectations of collaboration and the functioning of the town hall as well. And they're a huge, uh, sponsor of it. And, you know, part of it is when I was on the planning commission, a lot of the, the commercial properties that we allowed to, um, upgrade and benefit, we are now are reaping those benefits years later through, uh, enhanced sales tax and that type of thing. And so I really want to change the mentality that this is about small town America, that this is about an institutional building that services all needs of the town and infrastructure and sewer and everything else. And, you know, um, it's a reasonable budget for, um, a facility of this type, uh, for any community. So I just really, um, I hear what you're saying. I understand those concerns. They're valid, you know, but I, I can, I, it's hard to, I'm not convinced of that. I think that we've done two and a half years of really deep dive into what this facility needs to be. And the best way to do it, I think I've seen just amazing, you, you know, in constant learning, it's, you know, we asked you to go back and do that matrix and that matrix is incredibly helpful to think of those buildings and all their services, right? And, and it might be going one trajectory, but we learn and, and come back. And, and so I, I really want to, um, applaud everyone on that. And then, uh, with the solar, um, I, I, I guess I was a little object. I don't like sculpting buildings to basically put some solar panels on them. I think that there's a lot of strategies of detaching solar panels from buildings and make them more efficient, you know? I think, uh, Redwood High is a great example of that, um, as, as one example, uh, you know, and, uh, not putting them up on the roofs and, and basically, uh, limiting, um, what we can do with a building, a building's a building, energy production should come from the most efficient ways to produce energy. So, uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to share those thoughts, uh, and I really appreciate all the public comment. Whatever it is, it always helps inform my decision, uh, as we move through all the comments. And I'm sorry we had to cut people off. I would have just liked to have heard them a little bit more, but I feel like it's been two and a half years. So hopefully they've used all those of times to influence it to the point we've gotten now. But I, I can make the findings for both, um, the, uh, both things being asked of us today and, and move it forward and, and, um, you know, uh, feel confident that it's the best thing for the community.
Sorry, I was muted. I just want to clarify, Charles, um, you, you are, uh, interested in, in moving the, the two resolutions and kind of moving on from the consideration of whether to purchase land. Okay, great. Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Bob?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to thank the, uh, public comment as well. It was really interesting and helpful. But I wanted to kind of come back to before COVID. And before this whole thing hit, we needed a new town hall then. We had staff in trailers. I was meeting with Todd Cusamano in an office on the lower floor where he had to bend over to get through the doorway and bend his head down. So he didn't hit his head on the ceiling. He was using that as an office. We were trying to use that as public facilities and COVID has made it much worse, right? We cannot put people into the offices because they're too close together. They can't distance. We got a town to run. We got a staff. We got to take care of them. We need to do this. Okay? And this needs to be done. The sooner we get rolling on it, I think the better off we will be. I think the design is terrific. I think it's wonderful. But this isn't a, um, this isn't a civic pride thing. It's a, we need to do this to make sure the town works and functions, uh, and continues to operate, then it needs to operate in. Need to do this for the staff. We need to do this for the town. And I think the sooner we get rolling on this, the better off we will all be and we'll all be in a much better place and the town will be running better. So I just wanted to add that to what, uh, Charles had said as well. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Bob. David?
I, uh, agree with what Bob has just said, except that I do think it's also a civic pride thing. But the specific, uh, things, first of all, I, I really want to thank all the staff who worked on the comparative analysis of the different ways to solve the issue of, of providing a fully professional town hall function. And, uh, it's very persuasive to me and particularly in answer to council member Casillas' questions. There is a potential, uh, set of risks and distraction for town leadership if we are going to become a landlord with rental tenants and so forth. So I, I think, uh, refreshing this corner and, uh, creating something of pride there as, uh, Peter Hensel suggested, and I also appreciated, uh, Michael with a small M on Willow Street, uh, stating what the, uh, if we don't do this, what do we do with the leftover property? It's really not a prime either residential or commercial, uh, location. It is a very prime, uh, institutional, that is town hall location. And it, the, the alternatives, uh, would not be, uh, that special. I of course do want to get to as close to zero net energy as possible and, um, urge for the, uh, filling up of, of solar and even if it's visible and even if it's on slope roofs, I think that would be fine. Charles, uh, building over parking as they did at, uh, Redwood is more expensive, uh, on a per watt basis than it is on a roof. And, um, I do appreciate the comments of, uh, Annette and, uh, others on dollars. Uh, but I also think that because of the situation that we're in, it is the best time to march forward. And I'm impressed with the staff sort of focusing attention and, and driving this forward. So I could make the findings in favor of both the mitigated negative declaration. Uh, nobody has said anything about the environment being destroyed by this, uh, project. And also on the desirability of moving forward with a project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. Fred?
I guess the one good thing about going last is a lot of comments have already been vetted. Um, so I, I won't add to that. But I would, I would go for the city hall remodel. I think buying other buildings, we should just refocus into the remodel. And just to kind of hit, I think my main bullets is, you know, we're building a totally sustainable building. It's going to be built for generations to come way past, I know, my time. Great location because it's right in the middle of town. Definitely civic pride. I think it's something that we can all take pride in and be proud of once that building is completed. It's got a great design and it also solves government efficiency by getting town staff in something that functions very well. So I would, I would recommend it or both that we move forward with, um, the two resolutions.
Yeah. And, and I agree. And again, I want to thank all the members of the public who commented. I think a, a lot of really good points raised, really good questions asked. Um, with regards to, to, um, those who are speaking about the financial position, I, I thank Todd for really laying it out very clearly for us. Uh, this is something, this is a need that we saw coming. As Bob said, we've needed a town hall for years. Uh, you know, this, this building is, it's 90 years old. It's just, it's straight up at the end of its useful service life. That's just, that's what happens with buildings, especially if they were built in the thirties and weren't really built to last. So this is very much something that we, we saw coming and budgeted carefully for. Uh, and, and I thank Todd for laying out, you know, we are, we are confident of our financial position and our ability to afford this right now, uh, really to make this investment for Corder Madera's future. So I think that, uh, that seems all buttoned down to me. Um, I, I also want to thank, I, I think it was Barbara who brought up, uh, Park Madera Center. I think, uh, you know, I think we're all very much cognizant of that precedent, which I would imagine is part of why none of us seem to be interested in, in buying more land. The town already owns plenty of land. I think we're all in agreement there. And, and there's, you know, this is a fantastic spot for town hall to remain. So I think, you know, that lesson is very much at the forefront of our minds. No, you know, again, it's, it's a project of need, right? Uh, as Bob said, uh, you know, this, this is an office space for folks who, who provide the services that we all rely on as residents. Uh, and when, when they're working in, in, you know, subpar conditions and, and have a hard time, you know, even getting in and out of their offices without bending down. When you've got them crawling over each other and when you've got the building springing leaks and, and has asbestos, you know, that, that is an impediment to their ability to work efficiently and to provide services effectively. And ultimately that costs taxpayers money, right? Because then you're, you're having staff work more to produce the same amount. It's just, you know, it's, it's a dollars and cents thing. In that way, it's an efficiency thing. Uh, you know, these are folks who, who I think it, we all benefit if we provide our staff with a good working environment. You know, in addition to that, I think, uh, one thing that I'd like to focus on more is what a public amenity, you know, this is. I think folks, uh, have a tendency to underappreciate the wide array of different groups and organizations and, and, you know, folks who come in and use the council chambers here. Uh, you know, the council chambers really is not only, it's not only the only currently conference room at, at town hall, but it's also a really important public space, uh, for, you know, civil society. And we have, you know, nonprofit groups that will come in and use the space. When we have power outages, we turn it into a charging center. I think that's really critical. And, and, you know, Pat was, was talking about the importance of tying, you know, this project into a larger public facilities master planning thing. I see the community room in the, in the town hall remodel as really being an important kind of augmentation to the community center. I think it's another space. It's obviously much smaller than the community space, but I think it's important for us to have, you know, a couple of different sized venues in town for different sized meetings and different sized gatherings. Uh, and I think that there's a, a real public value to having a much nicer and more usable community room, uh, at town hall for residents. So, you know, I, for all those reasons and the reasons that, that all of my colleagues stated, I, I agree. I think, uh, I think this is a well-vetted, well-designed project. I don't see, uh, much utility in buying yet more land. So I would also, uh, you know, support moving forward with these two resolutions and I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion. We, um, go ahead and move forward with the town hall, hall remodel and prove the two resolutions.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Bob?
I'll second that.
Great. Thank you very much. And Rebecca?
I would just say we, if, if you can, uh, town council, uh, members, if we can do each one separately, just from the standpoint of, uh, recording a vote on the, um, the SEQA document.
Just going to ask about that.
And already, so. I will, I will move the approval of the mitigated negative declaration.
All right. That is resolution three, 2021.
I'll second that.
Council member Casilla?
Yeah.
Council member Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes, thank you. And now we will entertain a resolution, uh, a motion on resolution for 2021.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve, uh, resolution number four slash two oh 21 to approve the town hall remodel in addition project I described in the town project plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Thank you.
Council member Casilla?
Yes.
Yes.
Council member Avasia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right. And that concludes our business items. Thank you, Adam and Rebecca for straightening us out there. So that brings us to item seven, which is council reports and town manager reports. And we will start with Todd.
Council, I actually was going to defer my comments to Adam. Um, we highlighted, um, the recent changes, um, with A-BAG and the housing methodology. And I just wanted, um, Adam, if you can, just to give council a quick verbal update on where we're at.
Yeah, sure thing. Uh, uh, council members, as, as you know, um, uh, the, uh, A-BAG and MTC have been going through the process of basically, approving the regional housing needs allocation, the amount of housing units that each jurisdiction in the Bay area is going to be required to, uh, plan for in, from 2023 to 2031. And just so you know, the A-BAG gets these numbers from the state, 441,000 units, um, was assigned to the Bay area from the state. And then the A-BAG, uh, MTC group, um, through a methodology committee assigns those. So, um, we, we did submit when, when there was a, uh, a request for, uh, comments on the draft Rena numbers. As you will call, we, the council authorized, uh, the mayor to draft a letter and send that letter to, um, A-BAG. Basically, uh, A-BAG, basically taking issue with the methodology that was chosen that assigned additional units to Corder Madera. That process though, others have chimed in as well, but that process has moved forward to now, I think just a couple of weeks ago, the, the draft Rena numbers have been approved. And now they are final Rena, Rena numbers are going up to, I believe, the A-BAG executive committee shortly, and then we'll go up to HCD for approval, the housing, the state agency responsible for this. Our numbers are at 725 units that will be planned, be required to plan for at various different income levels throughout town, which just for comparison sake, the last eight-year cycle, 2014 to 2022 was 72 units. So it's a tenfold increase in the number of units we're going to be required to plan for. And, you know, in, in general, there's a lot of things to take issue with, but I think, you know, the regional effort here is, is really geared at addressing housing affordability region-wide issues of equity as well as what drove some of the, the numbers to certain jurisdictions rather than others. And of course, some of the planning around reducing ultimately the GHG emissions by assigning more units and more housing growth to areas with already existing transportation infrastructure and jobs. So in any case, that process is, is ongoing. And so you've likely heard information about that and will continue to do so. That process will play out over the next six months or so until there's a final, final Rena number assigned to us. But our work really starts earlier than that where we start to think about where, you know, planning for these, these units in our community should go. And part of that effort is really related to, we started working on objective design and development standards, sort of almost assuming that we may not reach and keep up with these units in terms of actually building those units. Obviously, we don't have control about building those. If we don't build those units, then we're subjected to the loss of discretionary review of housing, multifamily housing. So we want to get in place some objective standards so that at least we have that ability to apply those standards to new development in that, that happens in town. But nonetheless, I guess that's, that's where we are. More to come. And for the community members that are out there, we will be sort of reaching out and talking about development of housing in Corder Madera, best locations for that and meeting the state law requirements moving forward. So with that, hopefully that is enough of a report for now, but I, I'm happy to come back to the council as well in the near, near term and have a separate discussion about this, if that's desired.
Before us, and again, just the only other update, and it's at the top of all of our list. I know we have the climate adaptation workshops, both tomorrow night, if that's four thirty to six thirty, we'll be talking about the shoreline concepts. And then on Thursday from seven to nine, we'll be discussing the power lines and wildfire mitigation with Central Mountain Fire Authority. And I know the council has received a lot of comments as staff and we're working hard. This is what we want. We wanted to have engagement. We have it. And we're going to take advantage of this opportunity. So anyone that's on this call, please join us the next two nights. It's, it's important. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you guys so much. We're going to go to council member reports now. We'll start with Fred.
Yeah, I attended the monthly MCC MC meeting, which was last week. I also attended the subcommittee for, for project Home Key, project over by Marin Joes. And then I also attended the regular steering committee meeting. Couple of things out of that meeting. One thing is we're trying to get away from using the word project Home Key or the hotel next to Marin Joes. So we're kind of looking at calling it Casa Buena for now. So we renamed it Casa Buena Steering Committee, just to let everybody know. There should be approximately nine people moving in before the end of the month. Adam and staff have been working with Marin County as far as on the construction side to get them their certificate of occupancy. And then on the exterior work, more maybe coming down the road a little. There may be some grant money that's available to do that. But homework bound was supposed to be walking the property today with a couple of members of our community. And I'm not sure if Adam was involved in that or not also. And then on success metrics, there's three things that came up with trying to measure the success of that project. One was just looking calls for service, police, ambulance, that kind of, those kind of items, which it's somewhat, it's easier, easier to be measured. Second was shelter effectiveness, which Catholic charity is actually going to be running that for the county on an interim basis. They have their own set of measurements that they use. And the third part is community embracement, which that part is still, the subcommittee is still trying to figure out how to deal with that part or what kind of surveys that should be done. And the last part is as far as volunteerism, there's been a great outpouring from the community as far as in-kind donations regarding blankets and those type of items for welcome baskets. And also to date, about $700 have been donated towards our project. That's all the updates I have. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you, Fred. Charles?
Yeah, so I attended the, the first meeting of the year for TAM. There was good news that came out of TAM. I think, you know, they had been even more fiscally impacted than a lot of other groups and, and because of, you know, the impact on public transportation and, and the type of funding, they, they, it was definitely, they were a threat of having to do layoffs and, and some of the groups that they're affiliated with. But because of some of the more recent COVID relief, I think that they are not going to have to do that. And in fact, when the sales tax numbers came back in, it was above their conservative estimates. And so they actually are going to meet their budget, which was fantastic news for them and, and for keeping our infrastructure running while we, you know, try to address the, the bigger pandemic and, and everything else and even move, you know, forward-looking projects continually moving. So, you know, the $41 million for the, the final fix on one oh one by thirty, by highway 37 and, and other things have been approved and are moving forward. They have this, they have some new resources for public entities looking to understand funding mechanisms and, and grants for electrification of electric bikes, charging infrastructure and fleet replacement. And I think that they anticipate that it's going to be even more moving forward since, you know, we, we're seeing new mandates from the new administration to replace all government fleets, you know, like at the federal level, but then in the state and everywhere else. So I think they're anticipating that that's going to be a huge part of it. They also got some special one-time funding, looking for more shovel-ready projects this next year in a couple million dollars for improving smaller kind of bike improvements and, and, and smaller projects like that. So they're currently looking for proposals from communities for applications for that. So that was also good news that they're continuing to receive funds and distribute them to benefit everyone. So that was good. And then also I attended the California League of Cities junior member like training sessions the last two weeks, which I found very helpful and insightful for the, how council members and mayors are conducting themselves across all of California. And then also I was appointed alternate for the, I, I think Beck can explain it more, but it's the it's affiliated with that as well. So continue to make improvements for the town and our relationships regionally.
Excellent. Thank you, Charles.
Rebecca, can we quick vote to extend the meeting, please? It's nine thirty and we've got the sanitary district meeting at the office.
Yes, absolutely. Can we get a motion on that, please?
I'll make the motion. We'd extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Casisa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice President Kuhnert?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And Bob, any council report?
Yeah, just quickly, the big thing was the Marin Wildfire JPA. We had our first strategy session, which was supposed to be an offsite. But we took the better part of half a day. We did it via Zoom with all 18 board members and the staff. Lots of breakouts and lots of brainstorming about, you know, mission statement, values, strategies and lots of information about wildfires. So it was really good and really productive and we should come to agreement or our next meeting on exactly what's going to come out of that. And that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. David?
Following on with that last, the Twin Cities Disaster Preparatory Committee was visited by Michael Brown, the executive director for the JPA, Wildfire Prevention JPA. And, and he kind of tilted his cards about a new, very sophisticated, very dynamic evaluation system that police and fire and others are going to use to track any wildfires that may be coming from any direction called the Zone Havens platform. And that will be, there will be a public announcement coming on around about May 1st on that front. I also attended the MCC MC meeting and, and there's one relevant thing for anybody who wants to or is planning on attending the sea level rise alternatives discussion tomorrow. And that is the BCDC presented to MCC MC and in particular focused on the Bay Adapt Program. And I would urge anybody who is, wants to be prepared for the conversation tomorrow afternoon to look at bayadapt.org. And that's all for now.
Great. Thank you, David. And the only thing that I wanted to report on that hasn't already been covered is I attended a meeting of the MCC MC Legislative Committee. And, you know, kind of tying into what, what Adam was talking about, housing is really kind of dominating the scene, especially in Sacramento. I think, you know, our, our Rena numbers are insane. Everybody, everybody's aware of that. So not too much to report yet. It, it's early in the session, but I just wanted to, to kind of let you guys know that I think, again, just like it's been for the last several years, it's going to be primarily housing bills that you're going to be seeing causing a big stir. And that, you know, the Legislative Committee of MCC MC and that's the League of Cities are probably going to be wanting to work closely with us on. So that'll be a good opportunity there for us to hopefully, you know, hopefully have some, some voice in, in how this all ultimately shakes out. I know Senator McGuire is introducing a bill, which I thought looked potentially promising. Looking at, you know, basically trying to rework the, the way that, that these housing units are, are, you know, distributed and, and that funding for them is distributed. So I, I'll bring you more, more details on that once we discuss them in, in more depth, but just wanted to let you guys know that that is on the horizon. That, that concludes our council reports. Item eight is the discussion of draft agenda. Any comments on our draft agenda for the next meeting?
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, council member Casas asked us to bring back the update of where we are in our current work plan. And so under presentations, number two, we're going to change, swap out the department updates, goals and objectives for town administration. And I'll give a presentation on where we are in that work plan. Also, not on this agenda, but if we can pull it off on this agenda, the next we'll bring back the amendment to the smoking ordinance as requested by some members of the community and in the last couple of meetings. And so we're working hard to get that before you as well for consideration.
Great. Thank you. So with that, we're going to adjourn the town council meeting and convene our sanitary district two meeting. So we're going to call to order the Tuesday, February 2nd meeting of the Board of Directors of Sanitary District Two. I will wave the salute to the flag. Rebecca, can we have a roll call, please?
Board member Casisa? Board member Lee?
Here.
Board member Avazia?
Here.
Board Vice President Kuhnert?
Here.
Board President Beckman?
Here. Thank you. Open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items that are not on our agenda. Members of the public will be given three minutes apiece to comment. And you can either raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Is there any public comment? And I'm not seeing any hands up. Rebecca, did we get any emails for SD two?
No, we did not receive any email comments.
Okay, then seeing no hands up, we will close public open time. There are no presentations, which brings us to our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have previously been discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the public or the board can pull an item for comment or discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull an item from our consent calendar? Okay. Would any members of the public like to pull an item from our consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion on the consent calendar. Yeah, Bob?
Move to approve items for A and for B.
Second.
Great. Great. Thank you. Rebecca, could you vote, please?
Board member Casisa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avazia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnert?
Yes.
Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you. That brings us to item five, public hearings. Our only public hearing, five A is first reading and possible introduction of ordinance number forty six, which is, I believe, the, the sanitary district to kind of corollary to the ordinance that we just discussed for the town council, authorizing the district manager to settle claims and lawsuits of up to $50,000 as permitted by state law. Mr. Cusamano?
I suppose it's such a great job on the, on the last report. We're just happy to answer any questions. This really does mirror the other staff report. The district manager is RJ and so RJ would have this, would, this would be delegated to him. The only caveat additional to this would be that there's, there is language where on claims it would be in, you know, and working with the town manager. And so I would, I would, he would ultimately have the decision, but obviously we would collaborate on any claims with the sanitary district. And so that, that would be the only real change. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Any other questions from the board? If not, we'll open this up to public comment. Any member of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and, ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we happen to get any emails on this?
Nothing beyond what I, I read during the town council meeting that also pertained to this item.
Perfect. That was a, a great comment and I thought that staff's response was excellent. I'm not seeing any hands up, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion or a possible motion on ordinance forty six. Fred?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance number forty six.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you.
Just to clarify, it's, it's first reading and introduction of, of the ordinance. It will be next agenda for approval if it's introduced tonight. Board member Casisa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Avazia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnert?
Yes.
Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much. There are no business items. Item seven is district manager and board member reports. Is there a district manager report?
Just real quick, we're wrapping up our sewer system management plan and just received proposals for our sewer master plan. So those are two documents that are going to help us make decisions moving forward and we'll be bringing those hopefully forward for possible authorization in the coming month.
Great. Thank you, RJ. Are there any board member reports? If not, any comments on our next agenda? And if not, then we adjourned.